Quarter, welcome to the 10th of March 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. Please stand for a minute of silence and reflection. Thank you, be seated. At the beginning of each Planning Commission meeting, we allow time for a comment period where anyone can speak for up to three minutes on any topic that is not on the agenda. It's three minutes per person, so if there's anybody who would like to come forward and speak to us about something that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to the agenda. I am going to rearrange the agenda today because I would like to process out applicant submitted cases first, and we'll save the city submitted cases till after that. So we'll begin with the two CP cases and then move on to the zoning cases, the Z cases. So we're going to start with CP 1119 West Morgan Street, and Commissioner Hicks has a report from the Committee of the Whole about that one.
Okay, thank you. CP 1119 West Morgan Street, this was an amendment to remove a portion of the planned West Morgan Street extension, and we had discussion regarding, in addition to that, we had some discussion regarding the removal of the entire segment of the street, perhaps in the future. The vote, it meant forward with a recommendation for approval, and the vote was not unanimous. It was six to two, six four to opposed.
So do we have any additional information from staff that we need to share? So is the committee ready to vote on this case? Do we need any more discussion? Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion? Anybody need their handy dandy?
It's a comprehensive plan amendment, so it doesn't require any consistency statement because you're amending the comprehensive plan, so all you need to do is just make a motion to approve or deny, whichever you want to do.
All right, I make a motion to approve CP 1119 West Morgan Street.
I'll second. Sorry, Michelle got it, second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it just passed unanimously. Moving on to the second CP case, I've lost my agenda in front of me. CP 120 Swift Creek Watershed.
All right, good morning. So this is a request to amend some area-specific guidance, so in Chapter 16 of the comprehensive plan. There's three, at least three different things called Swift Creek involved here, so I'm going to walk through. If you're confused, I understand. Hopefully by the end, that won't be the case, but I'll be happy to try and sort that all out. So we're starting with the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. This is for the Swift Creek watershed, so around Lake Benson's and Lake Wheeler, about 40,000 acres, and it is a, basically a land use plan agreed to by five jurisdictions. So there's Wake County, the four municipalities, and then the state. This is from 1987, put in place to protect the sensitive watersheds around some drinking water supply. There's then the Swift Creek Interlocal Agreement, so this is much newer. You see, the land management plan is from the 80s, and the interlocal agreement was adopted a couple of years ago, and what the interlocal agreement sets forth is a formal way to amend the land management plan. So the ILA doesn't actually regulate the land use in the watershed, but it says if you want to change the land management plan, any of those five jurisdictions, here's the way you do that, and it involves public hearing and unanimous adoption, that kind of stuff. And then the third thing is, the City of Raleigh has part of the comp plan, the Swift Creek area-specific guidance, so just like we have small area plans for lots of other areas, we have a version of basically the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, so what the land use plan says, we have adopted as our own policy in the comp plan itself. And so that's what the applicant is requesting to change, specifically Policy Number Eight. Don't worry about all these words, I'll walk through them. There's, this, this policy is sort of a series of if-then until you get to the final punchline. So it starts out with impervious surfaces should be limited to 12%, basically, unless you have a condition when you have public utilities, and then you can have basically a 30-year lot as impervious, if you have water and sewer. The Swift Creek policy from the city is basically to not extend utilities in this area, so it's very rare that we do that. There is then a caveat to that 30% that says there are certain areas where you can have up to 70%, if you're in specific geographic locations, and then there's a dot-dot-dot that describes where the locations are, but those areas that can go up to 70, so the way the current policy is written, says shall not exceed 5% of our jurisdiction in the watershed, so it puts a hard cap on where we allow that excess to be. And the request here is to replace that 5% number with the equivalent acreage. So our jurisdiction in the watershed times .05 is about equal to 154 acres, if that makes sense, so far. So this is just to recap, this is, so again, the watershed is 40,000 acres, we have about 3,000 of it in our ETJ for the most part, and then these, these categories here are basically what the land management plan, land use categories. So the most intense land use category is the new urban equivalent to R6 zoning that we have. So we're starting with this 3,000 number, when I start talking through percentages and acreage, it's not of the whole watershed, it's just of what's in, the part of our watershed in our jurisdiction. So the current policy is, like I say, 5% of that 3,000 or so acres can be at this higher level of impervious. Currently, we estimate there's about 137 acres that meet that higher level, so we're already at 4.4%, roughly. So the applicant in this case, who's requesting the comprehensive plan amendment, is planning to request an ETJ relinquishment, so that means we will give some of our ETJ in the watershed back to Wake County. So instead of 3,000 acres that we plan for in the, in the watershed, we'll go down to 28 and some change, 2800 and some change. So what that means is when that 5% in the policy is now multiplied by a new number, a smaller number, right? So the, even though the 137 acres will still be there tomorrow, if you, if this is approved, we're now at a higher percentage of what we control because what we control is smaller, okay? So we estimate still not quite at 5, but getting pretty close to 4.8, should, should the ETJ relinquishment be approved by, I think the City Council and Wake County have to both approve it. So the request is to replace the 5% with just a flat acreage amount, so that there is not a scenario where we inadvertently exceed our own policy. So even though we would not be permitting new development at that higher standard, we would still be exceeding the policy because of the algebra. So like I said, that's where the requested 154 acres has come from. Think, this is a complicated review process, more than normal comp plan amendments, so in addition to city planning, there was some pretty well-coordinated review with the City Attorney's Office and the Stormwater Division. No one really objecting to changing the policy, however, the other five participating jurisdictions, so the other four municipalities and the county and the state, all have percentage measurements, and there is state law that has percentage measurements. So staff's preference is to not eliminate the percentage measurement, just as sort of a safety measure, so that we do not drift so far apart that we are noncompliant with state law inadvertently. So the request as presented is this number one, just changing the acreage. I think staff would be comfortable with number two, which is inserting the 10% number in there, or the acreage, whichever is less. I'll note here that I believe Raleigh is the only one of the participating jurisdictions that uses this 5%, everyone else uses 10%, including the state law, so we have a stricter standard. So having the 10% cap would keep us compliant with state law, basically, no matter what we do. And then putting the number there would, would keep our more stringent standard. There is also the alternative to just replace the 5 with a 10, keep us compliant with state law. This would theoretically not happen in the future because we would never go above state 10, above 10%. So there are a lot of comp plan policies about environmental protection and Swift Creek, depending on what the final answer is, depends on whether or not we're consistent or not. I think staff does not object, in theory, to a 10% number. The other four entities agree that 10% is sufficient, we have a stricter standard. But the comp plan does say we should not increase impervious in the watershed, so should that happen, I think it would be counter to a lot of these comprehensive plan policies. I think options one and two would be consistent with everything because we would be keeping, keeping the status quo and allowing this type of action of relinquishing ETJ to continue to happen. Right. So two out of your three options are consistent, and the third one is, is not. And your deadline is in May, I'll say the, the UDO says that you can recommend be, be approved as revised, so should you agree with staff that you would prefer it to be revised to that option two, to insert the 10% language that can be recorded in your recommendation? And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
You mentioned the 229 acres.
Mm-hmm.
Where, where are they?
They are, if I remember, so around there, this is Tryon Road, so it's mostly the yellow there, which is rural, and I, one or two of those parcels in the new urban might be included in that request. And so I'll say, like, the, changing this policy does not change the land management plan. This would stay in place, which would recommend, you know, basically R1 zoning equivalent. They would be able to develop under Wake County development standards and Wake County zoning, should the ETJ be relinquished, but the county is operating under the same land management, land management plan that we are, so theoretically, they would zone it equivalent to our R1, but then they would have the standard, the county standards for, you know, well-inseptic and that sort of thing. But they are something like that.
So are we, as part of this case, having any say in the relinquishing of acreage to, from the ETJ? Is that part of our case, or is that just something City Council is supposed to take up?
This would allow that relinquishment to be consistent with our plan and not be in violation of the area plan for the Swift Creek watershed.
So it has an in...
But it does not, it sets, it sets up that action, but it, but that action is not part of your action today. The only action you're taking today is amend the comprehensive plan. And that was a very thorough presentation, you know, the, the anomalous history here is this is one of the first watershed management plans, I think, in the state, and at the time it was created, the county did not have watershed zoning tools, and so this watershed was divvied up amongst various municipalities to enact the watershed regulations. Since that time, the county has adopted watershed regulations. So had this, had they had them in place, that probably wouldn't have been necessary. It's unusual for the city to have such a large ETJ area in a place that we've pledged to never annex and serve with public utilities. Typically, our ETJ is extended over areas that we expect to come into city services and be developed in a urban manner on our utility system. This is a bit of an outlier, and that's, that's the reason why.
And so just to be clear, option two is the only option that is both consistent with the comprehensive plan and also that staff does not object to?
Correct.
Okay, so it's, we've got an objection to one, we've got an out of sync with the comp plan in three, and so that leaves option two with no issues associated with it at this point, but we can...
We feel like it covers the bases.
Gotcha.
It caps the amount of area consistent with the current plan to be developed in the urban pattern, and then it also protects us from the standpoint of losing land from the denominator of that ratio through ETJ relinquishment, which means, of course, that eventually we'll bump into that number, and then we have, whatever's left in the ETJ stays in the ETJ from that, that point forward, in order to remain consistency, consistent with the overall land management plan.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? Let's bring forward the applicant. And also, if there's anybody here that plans to speak in support or opposition for this case, if you could please come sit in the front row to save us some time for people getting up, so, all right.
Good morning, Molly Stewart, Morningstar Law Group, 421 Fayetteville Street. As was noted, that was a very thorough presentation of exactly what's going on here, so just a couple of points I wanted to emphasize, which is that the ultimate goal here is the ETJ relinquishment, and remaining in the ETJ would imply some kind of future sewer service, things like that, that are not intended here. The key here is that, that moving this, or amending the comprehensive plan in this way would not change the actual protected area, and in fact, the ETJ relinquishment would keep the same standards applicable to this, this land. There's no increase kind of in, in the intensity that would be permitted. Under that interlocal agreement, the Swift Creek Land Management Plan applies regardless, and in fact, can't be amended or changed without unanimous consent of all the jurisdictions. So if there were any plan to change that, Raleigh would have a veto by itself on that point, and I'm available for any questions.
Oh, we forgot to tell you to start the timer, Ken. But too late now. Sorry.
Butter bud for 30 seconds.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? All right. If there's anybody here who's come to speak in support, please come forward. Anyone here that was like, would like to speak in opposition, please come forward, okay?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Robert Mulder, 3116 Ward Road, Raleigh 27604. I'm not here for this case, but I've been involved with water quality and quantity issues for a long time in this city, and I'm not completely familiar with this, I haven't been following this, but when I see change the 5% to a maximum of 10%, it sends up a bunch of red flags, because over decades, people have been trying to nibble, what I call nibbling away at the edge of the watershed, and you might, they'll say, well, it doesn't really matter, it's in a busy area, it's just, you know, we need to have that change, and that the middle of the watershed is more important than the edges. Well, that's totally false, it's all important. So I would ask you to be extremely cautious about maximizing something. It's better, when it comes to water quality, it's better to make the error on the side of caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to come and speak? All right, let's bring it back to the table. What's your pleasure? Do we need to have more discussion about this? Do we need to send it off to committee? Would you like to make a motion?
Seems as though option two helps facilitate the 154, keep that locked, and then the 10% minimum, seems like that satisfies both.
So just another question for staff, so the acreage doesn't change if we pick option two, is that right?
Correct.
Unless they get out of the ETJ?
Um...
Or no, it's, the acreage is the acreage, no matter what, out of option two?
Right, so if this is our policy, we're saying that 154 acres is as much as we want to have at that higher level of impervious surface, regardless of how big our ETJ is. So theoretically, if we gave back all our ETJ except for 154 acres, we'd be at 100%, right?
Right.
But that hard cap would stay the same.
Yeah, so this, 154 is the 5% trend?
Today.
5% in terms of the total area in our ETJ translated into acres. So option two preserves that cap, same number, just expressed differently, and it also makes sure that future relinquishments will not bring us out of compliance with the overall land management plan by exceeding the 10%. Option three changes to 10%, but that could proceed by either overstepping the 5% or by relinquishing more out of the, out of our ETJ such that we exceed, you know, get up to 10%. And what we're trying, what staff's recommendation is to forestall that first opportunity, which is to creep above the current 5% in our adopted plan.
So did I hear a motion that you're interested in pushing forward with option two?
I move to recommend approval of option number two, changing the 5% maximum to 154.35 acres, or 10%, whichever is less. The rezoning case is consistent with the future land use map and consistent with the 2000...
The comp plan.
I'm sorry, comp plan. And I, I believe it's in the best interest of the public.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so it passes with one no vote.
All right. Thank you.
I abstained also, which is a yes.
Yes, so that's a yes. So just one no. All right, moving on to our first zoning case, Z 4919 Rock Quarry Road and Sunnybrook Road.
Rushing in for the wings.
We're whipping through them.
Good morning. Let's see. Okay, good morning, members of the Planning Commission. Res zoning Z 4919 is a request to rezone just over 14 acres, that's presently at R6, it is within the special highway overlay district, changing that to residential mixed-use, four stories with a parking limited frontage and conditions, again, within the shod one. The CAC, South CAC voted in the affirmative on this case last evening, as you see, 16 yes, five no, with five abstentions, and your deadline for action is May 25. Zoning in the areas predominantly R6, there is some neighborhood mixed-use and commercial mixed-use adjacent to the site. You see that it's located near the interchange of 40 and I 440, not far from the Walnut Creek Amphitheater and just across from the Walnut Creek Elementary School. Close up of the site, this site is a collection of parcels that have served as larger lot home sites over the past few decades, and some views from Sunnybrook Road, looking south and north from the site, and from Rock Quarry Road, looking west and east. Two conditions are proposed in this case. First, the single-unit living use will be prohibited in this proposal, and the density will be limited to 14 units per acre. Just a comparison, with the existing and proposed, presently a maximum of 84 units with the density cap of 14 units to the acre, that would, could result in a maximum of The requested parking limited frontage is consistent with the transit emphasis corridor, as described on the urban form map, and in terms of the proposal's carbon footprint, it is lower than the city overall. Would note that there is hourly bus service along Rock Quarry Road, in fact, there is a bus stop at the site. Right now, the pedestrian connectivity is fragmented, but as build-out occurs, these additional sidewalk connections will be made, and as you are aware, the townhouses and apartments in general have a smaller carbon footprint than single-family detached, which are conditioned out of this proposal. The proposal does add to the housing supply, these will not be subsidized units, and it is within walking distance of transit, so overall, it adds to the affordable and workforce housing supply, and again, lower carbon emissions per capita... frontage and conditions, again, within the shod one. The CAC, South CAC voted in the affirmative on this case last evening. As you see, 16 yes, five no, with five abstentions. And your deadline for action is May 25th. Zoning in the areas predominantly are six. There is some neighborhood mixed use and commercial mixed use adjacent to the site. You see that it's located near the interchange of 40 and I-440, not far from the Walnut Creek Amphitheater and just across from the Walnut Creek Elementary School. A close-up of the site. This site is a collection of parcels that have served as larger lot home sites over the past few decades. And some views from Sunnybrook Road, looking south and north from the site, and from Rock Quarry Road, looking west and east. Two conditions are proposed in this case. First, the single unit living use will be prohibited in this proposal, and the density will be limited to 14 units per acre. Just a comparison with the existing and proposed, presently a maximum of 84 units with the density cap of 14 units to the acre, that would, could result in a maximum of 197 units. The requested parking limited frontage is consistent with the transit emphasis corridor as described on the urban form map. And in terms of the proposal's carbon footprint, it is lower than the city overall. Would note that there is hourly bus service along Rock Quarry Road. In fact, there is a bus stop at the site. Right now, the pedestrian connectivity is fragmented, but as build-out occurs, these additional sidewalk connections will be made. And as you are aware, the townhouses and apartments in general have a smaller carbon footprint than single-family detached, which are conditioned out of this proposal. The proposal does add to the housing supply. These will not be subsidized units, and it is within walking distance of transit. So overall, it adds to the affordable and workforce housing supply. And again, lower carbon emissions per capita with the multifamily The proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan overall. The future land use map presently designates this area as commercial mixed use, and it is consistent with the urban form map with the PL frontage along the transit emphasis corridor at Rock Quarry. 14 policies were identified as consistent for this proposal, and you can see the list, particularly the location of growth and connectivity, as well as adding to the variety of housing stock and the frontage. One inconsistent policy deals with the buffering requirements in LU 5.6. The reason for that, this is a proposal to increase to four stories, and this may call for some additional measures to, to buffer that height transition from the surrounding areas. Particularly, specific measures along the northern and western boundaries of the site that are presently in low-density residential. And again, your deadline for action is May 25th, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I had one question. The, just so, this is more so just so I understand, the difference between LU 5.6 and the normal transition zones that are part of the site plan review?
Right. That will be required, of course. But because this is an additional story, it was the height transition in particular that...
So what's an example of something that we've seen previously that would be used here to satisfy that?
Perhaps someone can cite, I cannot cite a specific example, but something like a height step-down with most of the height being closer to the street.
Oh, I got you. So more with the built form, less of...
Right. So the...
Okay.
The current policy is, I mean, the adopted standard in the code is, when your mixed use district adjoins an adjacent property, you have this transition area, 50-foot new build zone. But this can vary if you're doing multifamily. To look it up as to whether it's only three-story apartment buildings, you get the exemption from that setback when RX joins a residential district. But anything stricter than the code would meet the policy. I mean, or typically something stricter than the code could meet the policy, and it's typically invoked when someone is asking for additional height above three stories and adjacent to lower-density residential. And it's up to the commission to determine the extent you think that that is necessary for you to feel comfortable with the case.
Any more questions for staff?
What were some of the concerns of citizens?
I believe that there were just a very small number of folks there. I know that the applicant met with the church, and I believe the concerns were centered around traffic and density.
What exactly about traffic? Because I'm familiar with the area, and isn't, are we going to address more so about left turns, right turns, not only, not only the amount of traffic, but how people have access to the street?
Yes. And, and those, those measures such as turn-in lanes and so forth will be dealt with at the site plan stage.
So their concerns will be taken into consideration and, and absolved, or?
Their, site plan stage is typically an administrative review unless a deviation from the ordinance requirements is being requested, at which point there's a alternate or variance process for that. Their, their concerns will be taken into account to the extent that they're embodied in the standards that we have in our street manual and in the UDO. But other than that, no, because an administrative approval, staff is required to approve the conforming development if it meets the code standards. And the fact that the neighbors might want something stricter than the code standards is not a thing that can be considered during a site review. It can't, it's something that can be considered during a rezoning.
Any other questions for staff? Let's bring the applicant forward.
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Isabel Maddox, PO Box 946, Raleigh 27602. I'm here this morning representing South Creek Development LLC, a developer of affordable housing in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia. It's true there's not a condition requiring this to be affordable. However, the proposal is for affordable housing apartments here. The reason there's no condition, as you've seen in many cases, is that the approval cycle to get the funding from the state, the tax credits, really goes for a long time. And so we can't commit to that because we won't know that the funding is there for, probably we'll have, we hope to have final approval by August. But they have, the zoning has to be in place by May. So there's this long sequence of events that has to happen. But this is proposed as an affordable housing development. That is what this particular developer does. They propose 192 units of affordable housing. We feel it's a good site, close to school, retail, transit, city parks, et cetera. We did meet with the CAC last night. We had been scheduled to go to the CAC when the council made its decision of disbanding the CAC. So we went in February. They asked that, we was kind of confusing about whether we would go back. I talked to the CAC chair, assured, and we would be happy to come back. And we did go back. There were five of no votes, 16 to five. There were general concerns about traffic, but traffic seems to be a concern in every zoning case in this city. I know Rock Quarry is a congested corridor, but I do think we will add some, you know, as, as Mr. Bowers pointed out, when we go through site plan, the city will vet it out and require right-of-way improvements as needed. I'm sure there'll be some sidewalks added, which I think will be a benefit to this area. And, you know, there may be some road widening or additional lanes that will, that's yet to be determined. There was not a TIA required for this particular development, given the, the density. There still could be one at the site plan stage. We did do some trip generation numbers, and I wish I had my electronics today. I did, just because of the tightness of the CAC meeting, I didn't get those in, and I apologize. But our trip generation numbers showed comparing, right now, there are seven, this is 14, roughly 14 acres. There are seven home sites. And so we're proposing it'll be serving instead of seven families, it'll be 192 families. The current zoning would allow 84 units, six, six units per acre. So we, we believe it's a better result to get 192 families served as opposed to 84. And the trip generation, comparing peak hour travel for those two uses, either if the property was developed as currently entitled at 84 units, it would generate only, versus the 192 we proposed, would only generate 20 to 25 more peak hour trips. So we think that's a pretty good trade-off, given the, the increased number of families that will be served. As Mr. Belt pointed out, it is consistent with the future land use map, which shows this property as a commercial mixed use, consistent with the urban form map, compatible with the neighborhood. The buffering issue, that's, that's a hard one because RX four, if we build four stories, we will be required to have a 50-foot distance between our building and the adjoining property. There will be a landscape buffer. There will be a wall or fence required and a 50-foot distance. If we, if we keep it to three, we won't have that much distance. But the, you know, we, we feel like we need four stories in this location. So I feel like there is pretty substantial space, and we're not abutting existing single-family now. We're abutting a church, and there has been some conversation. I don't know if the pastor's here. Here he is. He was there last night, and, and I think there's been some conversation about maybe he, he had some interest in, in possibly developing some part of their church property. We do believe there are major public benefits here. It adds to housing stat, stock. It replaces seven units and possibly adds 192, much-needed affordable family units. Will bring some sidewalks and right-of-way improvements. This will serve different levels of the AMI, Area Median Income. It'll serve 50%, 60%, and 70% of AMI. And the units are 31 units and 50%, 130 at 60%, and another 31 at 70%. So 60% of AMI in Raleigh for a family of four is about 55,000. There'll be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. And we expect two access points, a right and right out on Rock Quarry. So we don't think it'll be too bad adding to traffic on Rock Quarry because of the right and right out. On Sunnybrook, the developer would like to get a full movement, but we won't know that for sure until we, it gets fully vetted by Transportation Department. So if there's any questions, I'm certainly available to try to answer those.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yes. You mentioned 192 apartment residential units, and that's great. It adds to a needed residential stock in the area. But are there any other amenities or mix of, or uses proposed with this case?
There, there are no other uses proposed at, at present. There will be some amenities. There'll be a multipurpose room for meetings or, you know, gatherings of the, of the residents. There'll be a computer room. There'll be a playground for the kids. There'll be, you know, sort of typical apartment amenities. There's no, you know, in RX, you can do a very small amount of retail. You know, it's very prescriptive. You have to be on a corner of a building at, at an intersection. It's can maximum 4,000 feet. It makes it very difficult to do in an economically feasible manner. So I really would not expect that. So I, no, the answer to the question is really no other uses at this, at this point.
Any other questions for the applicant?
And just to clarify, the retail or any other commercial use is not really in the business line of the applicant.
No.
Right?
No. At one point, and, and the pastor spoke about this last night at the CAC, at one point, and I did not go to the original neighbors' meeting. I had not been retained for this case at that point, so I'm hearsay. But at one point, there was a site plan that, that was presented that showed maybe carving out an out parcel for retail. But once the developer, my client, met with the neighborhood, and it was not much of a neighborhood meeting. There were, I think, two neighbors there, including pastor of the adjoining church property. And once they heard his concerns, that he doesn't, didn't want the retail there, they backed off of that and said, we'll just do apartments. So...
So essentially, the applicant has been working with the community to meet their needs as well?
Well, that meeting, which was, was only two people, but we did get some pretty strong input on that one point and changed the development plan as a result. Did meet in two CACs, and that's been basically the neighborhood outreach.
I, excuse me. I do have a question. When you were talking about the playground space, that's very encouraging that, that that's a part of the plan. But what also about green space around the area?
Well, there's a lot of green space. And again, I feel remiss in not having my electronic exhibits. There will be, let's see if I have a, a little graphic I can at least pass around. There'll be a fair amount of, of green space. This is just sort of a site layout. And I can give apologies for the form of my exhibits. So I think, given the 14 acres, there'll be, I think, six buildings, which leave a fair amount of green area that, you know, for either playing or just absorbing water or whatever.
And maybe Mr. Belt can tell us about code-required green space for this, if there would be some, right?
There will be a tree conservation areas required, as well as the prescribed buffers for the transition yards.
But I'm, I see, I understand.
And 10% outdoor amenity area.
Okay. That's what I was about to ask, as I saw the perimeter. But what about actually within the, a live plant, a sign planned itself?
If it's 10%, it's over an acre.
Use your microphone, please.
Yeah.
Yeah. And given the space that we have, I don't think there'll be any, any issue with meeting any of those requirements. I think there'll be more than that available. Not, not necessarily tree conservation, but open areas. There'll be, I think there'll be plenty of, there'll be plenty of tree conservation, there'll be required tree, tree conservation, but there'll also be plenty of open areas between the buildings.
Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant at this point? All right. I just want to remind everybody of the procedure. So during the review of these kind of items on the agenda, the applicant and proponents have an opportunity to speak for 10 minutes. And you've had six of those. And so if there's anybody who wants to come up and speak in support, you have two minutes per person. After that, the opponents will have two minutes per person for up to 10 minutes. So we ask that nobody duplicate comments, please, to save us time. And, and if you want to speak, please come forward and sit on the front row. So is there anybody here who came to speak in support? Anybody who came here to speak in opposition?
Good morning. My name is Mark Gibson. I'm the pastor at Redeeming Love, which is right next to the property. And we spoke a little bit, and I'm not necessarily in opposition or necessarily still want to sort of develop this as, as good neighbors to the proposed property. I know the current owner of the property has been excellent. We've worked wonderfully together. There's not a lot of trees on the property. If, if you go and visit it, there's not a lot of trees. Where the trees are, basically on our property, which is, runs right behind the proposed property. My concerns have been just the level of traffic, because whenever there is a concert at Walnut Creek Amphitheater, Rock Quarry Road, you, you just can't get down it. You just can't. And so my concerns are, if we have a service at the church, and then there's a concert down the street, and now we have this existing property with individuals coming out, the traffic pattern concerns me. I know there's hopefully going to be some development of some sidewalks, but if you go down Rock Quarry Road, sidewalks stop right at the end of the property of the school. And then there's just the, there's just landscape and, and the side of the road. And so on both sides of Rock Quarry Road, we are praying and, and being very, very hopeful that sidewalks will be developed. I'm concerned about a number of young people who walk home from school with the amount of traffic that's coming. Now, even with the proposed site that's coming, I think there's a right turn in and right turn out. And so if they turn right out, that's turning towards our property, and we have a left and right ability to turn. Okay? And so now I'm wondering what will happen with us in terms of, of that traffic pattern as well. And so while I'm not opposed to what's coming, because I sincerely hope this is going to add to our, our area, I am concerned about some, those, those traffic areas, those traffic properties, and even the fencing that's going to go between our church and this property. Is that going, how high is that going to be? Is that going to take away from the aesthetics of our church? When you come down Rock Quarry Road, will you be able to see that Redeeming Love is right there because of a fence or a...
Thank you, Pastor. I mean, we didn't do the two minutes, and so you've gone your two minutes. But thank you. All right. Anybody else who wants to speak in opposition or speak at all? Okay, we'll bring back up the applicant. You have two minutes to respond. Any?
I would just say that we think we will improve the, the traffic and pedestrian situation there. The fence will be, or fence or wall, whichever is, is built, will be six and a half feet tall as required by code. There will be a requirement that we extend an offer across access to adjoining properties to the church property. Now, there's no obligation that that be accepted until it's redeveloped. But if, if there would be a desire to come through this property, I think that would be afforded to him.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Maddox.
Have a note that there is funding in place to both widen Rock Quarry Road and to add sidewalks within the coming year.
The improvements to the road will be this coming year or just the sidewalks?
Yes.
The improvements to the road will be this coming year or just the sidewalks?
Yes. Maybe transportation staff would like to elaborate.
Don't know that we can be certain that the improvements will be in place within the coming year. On next Tuesday's City Council agenda, there will be an item to accept a municipal agreement with NCDOT to add the scope of work to widen Rock Quarry Road between Sunnybrook and Old Birch, which would be the new bridge. This property's frontage, both sides of the property, or both sides of the street, along with the current work that's happening on I-40. Excuse me. So that NCDOT, as they're doing that construction on the interstate and impacting the bridge that's over the interstate, will also be doing widening on Rock Quarry Road to tie in all the sidewalks in a complete five-lane section. So it's really on NCDOT's timeline with that larger project, but the funding should be in place after City Council on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Any questions about?
Any questions about that?
I have an additional question about traffic and roads. At what point in the process would the pastor's question about their right and, the right and left churning be addressed if the new, the proposed property is just a right out? Meaning, if someone's trying to pull out of the church and turn left against all that traffic? Does that, is there a time in the process where something like that gets addressed? Is that...
The plan for Rock Quarry Road is to not put a median, to keep it a five lane with a center turn lane. So generally, if the church already has left-out access, that's still going to be in place. The site plan review of any new streets or any new driveways that happen with development of this property may be right-in, right-out. And they might design, you know, NCDOT may require those to be designed such that you shouldn't turn left into those places. I'm not sure I understood exactly what his concern or question was. Maybe I wasn't paying close attention.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that currently, they, you can come out and turn right or left.
Right.
And the concern would be is if the adjacent property is only churning right, that it would then become fairly difficult to...
Be harder to turn left.
...jump all that traffic and, yeah, get to the middle lane.
I think that's one of the things that NCDOT and the city of Raleigh would review with the site plan.
Site plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion you would like to have, or are you ready to make a motion?
I'm going to move to recommend approval of KC 49, 2019. It is consistent with the future land use map and the comprehensive, and the 2030 comprehensive plan. And also hearing that there were some questions about traffic, the fact that Rock Quarry Road does have plans in the future for improvements. I think that it's in the, it's reasonable and in the public interest as it adds the first new housing supply. It is also adjacent to a transit stop. And is, is just adding more much-needed housing in the city.
Do we have a second? All right. Any further discussion?
I do have one follow-up question, just to sort of help, I think, educate the public. If any neighbors have, want to be up to date and understand how the road improvements and access in and out of their property is occurring during this process and the widening of Rock Quarry, how do they get informed about that?
How do they get informed about the work that NCDOT is doing?
Yeah.
I think it's the best thing to do, since the city did the environmental documentation work for that project, and we are the ones who have procured the funding to do that project, would be to contact the city's Department of Transportation.
Okay.
As, in terms of a site plan review, that would be more of a planning and development function of if there is a subdivision or a site plan submitted, that people follow along with that and contact the case planner.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, typically, they're, right, the administrative review process happens kind of at the administrative level. When a decision is made, there's a posting on the property. If there is a need for, say, variance relief or other hearings associated with that review, then that would also be posted on the property, and there would be mailed an advertised notice.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous approval.
I abstain.
Oh, there's no abstain. You're a yes vote, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
You can, you can be excused from voting if you have, you're going to be financially impacted by the decision. Okay? Other than that, you vote. Okay? So if you abstain, you're a yes. Otherwise, the vote is however you vote. But you're, by law, you can't vote. It's a conflict of interest for you to vote if you are going to receive some kind of financial impact from the request. Okay? And so if that's not the case, you have to vote. Or your vote's recorded as a yes.
I misunderstood that. I guess it's probably too late now, but I really feel like there's more discussion on this case, so I'm voting. And I apologize.
So I think we are, we've made the vote, Mr. York. So can we backtrack at this point, or we...
Once the vote's been cast and the motion acted on, in this case, it was approved.
Right.
So if you wanted to upset that motion, someone who voted in the affirmative could make a motion to reconsider. And that requires a three-fourths supermajority to undo what happened.
All right. So...
And then it's back at the table.
All right. Anyone who made a yes vote can make a motion to reconsider, or we can just go with the vote that we have. All right. I think that's...
Can I just make one statement, though? I understand the vote is what it is, and that was my mistake as well. I do understand that affordable housing is needed, housing, this stock is needed, but I'm also concerned, as my colleague said, that there was, that there should be more conversation. I'm not really comfortable with all of the information that has been shared. There still seems to be some questions that I have, as well as the community has. And it was my, my hope that we would have, that there would be an opportunity for more conversation and clarification and compromise to be achieved.
Well, I will tell you, I did talk to the pastor last night and gave him my contact information and agreed to set up a meeting between him and the developer to try to talk about those types of issues going forward. So we do plan to continue that dialogue as we proceed. Thank you.
All right. Without a motion to reconsider, we're done, so.
So what was the...
It was unanimous in favor, because the two abstentions were a yes vote. So moving on to the next case, Z-5319.
Good morning. The next case is Z-53-19. And this is a request to rezone a little over 15 acres that is divided between two parcels on the south side of Thornton Road from residential, excuse me, from residential four to residential 10 with conditions. The Forestville CAC did vote to recommend denial of this request. And the two main topics that came up during that meeting were traffic, pass-through traffic in the neighborhood to the south, and stormwater issues for the neighborhood to the southeast, which is called Castleberry. And I'll talk a little bit more about both of those issues. And your deadline for action is June the 8th. So this is a mostly residential area. There is one sort of odd zoning district here on the north side of Thornton Road. That is a solid waste transfer station. And that is, the solid waste that's passing through there is household or construction So here you can see the larger area. Thornton Road is in the northern part of the map here. And then just south and west out of the frame is Capitol Boulevard and Perry Creek Road. That intersection is down in this area. And so one of the concerns of neighboring residents was, you can see Wildwood Forest Elementary School, and Wildwood Forest Drive is the intended pathway for vehicles picking up or dropping off students at that school. But what neighboring residents have noticed is that if Wildwood Forest or Thornton Road are very busy, then people will choose to drive through the Park at Perry Creek neighborhood, where there are a couple of other outlets to get you to Perry Creek Road. Here you can see the site. And so you can see it's actually a portion of two different parcels. And the reasoning for that is that the current owners would like to continue to live on the remaining portion of the property. And you can see the houses there that are sort of cut out of the zoning request. So the only current public street access is from Thornton Road. There are two stub streets that terminate at the boundary of the rezoning request area. There's Neuse Forest Road, which is in the Park at Perry Creek neighborhood. That's here. And then the other street is the Brambleberry Way stub at the southeast. There is another stub here at Neuse Farm, but because of the way the request has been constructed, the zoning district would not directly touch that stub street. There are a number of conditions. So the first two require a 20-foot landscaped area. And there would be two of those. One would be here along the Park at Perry Creek, this area. And then the other one would be along the Castleberry neighborhood. And so those are written to be similar to the 20-foot protective yard that's used for the neighborhood transition requirements. The one for Park at Perry Creek is required to have a fence. The way the condition is written for the buffer at Castleberry is that it could have a fence, or it could have, in substitution for that fence, additional shrub planting. And the reason for that is that the residents of Castleberry, who were at the CAC meeting, expressed that there are, already is a retaining wall behind these houses, because there's, the site is a little bit higher in grade, that they felt like a fence on top of a retaining wall was very bulky and tall, and that really their main goal was just a visual screening, and they would prefer vegetation rather than a fence for that. The maximum density is set at seven and a half units per acre, for a total of about 114 units on the site. And then condition number four says that in those areas that I just identified where a landscape buffer is required, if it's possible to use tree conservation in place of that planting for those buffers, then tree conservation will be used. And then a maximum number of units per building prohibiting some of the non-residential uses that would otherwise be allowed in this district, as well as pretty much all of the group housing and sort of non-household living residential uses, so congregate care, boarding house, those are all prohibited. Prohibiting construction vehicles from using the nearby neighborhood streets. And then a pedestrian connection with Neuse Forest, excuse me, that condition was removed. I apologize, I have not updated this. So condition number eight is no longer offered. And then additional stormwater control measure up to the 25-year storm event. So to talk about the stormwater question, this was raised at the CAC, and particularly for the Castleberry neighborhood, the subdivision, which is generally this area. And as I just mentioned, there is a retaining wall here, so there's a drop-off of about four feet between the rezoning site and the houses on Boisenberry Lane. But I've spoken with stormwater staff, and they have noted that the drainage complaints in this, in the Castleberry neighborhood are very likely not a result of any runoff from the rezoning site. Because what has happened is, and you see the memo in your backup materials for this item, is that the constructed stormwater control measure for this subdivision was not performing well. What happened is there are, these two green circles are underground storage that collects the runoff coming through the storm drains. And it was designed to have a gradual release of that stored water into this vegetated area here that would provide the water quality treatment. And what happened was that was not designed very well, so that the water would actually back up out of the storm drains into the street. And so the neighborhood has paid to have that retrofitted, so that those, these two devices are no longer for storage. They just convey the water into this area here. And additional bio-retention has been, has been done in that area to provide that water quality treatment, and some more detention in place of the underground facilities. The other issue is that there is a swale in this area that has difficulty retaining vegetation at ground level, because it has trees, a tree canopy over it that blocks out the sunlight, and so it is prone to erosion and pooling. And so stormwater has stated that really these issues are related to these poorly-performing stormwater control measures and are not a product of the adjacent property. That being said, the applicant has offered that condition for additional stormwater Here you can see the development intensity comparison. So currently zoned for four units per acre, which would result in about 60 units. And then the request has a conditioned maximum of seven and a half units per acre, so almost doubling the total number of units. In terms of carbon emissions, this area is not particularly multimodal. The nearest transit service is on Perry Creek, which is about a mile away by foot. And so it really is fairly car-dependent in this area. The request would allow townhouse units, which are not currently allowed, so there may be some greenhouse gas benefits to those types of units. The request is inconsistent with the future land use map, which designates the site for low-density residential. The density that is allowed, as well as the townhouse building type that's allowed, are not recommended by this designation. There is no urban form guidance. And so the case is consistent with the comprehensive plan, despite being inconsistent with the future land use map. And that has a lot to do with the fact that on one side of this site, there is a residential six-developed subdivision, and on the other side is a residential 10-developed subdivision. And so the seven and a half units per acre is pretty much right in the middle between the two different development types on either side. And so it is compatible with the existing developed character. But again, inconsistent with future land use map. And then a couple of policies just about building massing, considering that there could be townhouse buildings that are, you know, somewhat larger than a single-family house would be, that is a bit of a departure from the existing directly-adjacent single-family I have noted to the applicant that some of their conditions could be improved. They have since sent me revised conditions that were not submitted in time for review at this meeting, but those are, those are all technical corrections for wording. And so the conditions that you have before you would be improved by technical, technical corrections, which I already have in hand, but which you are not able to actually look And as with any case that has inconsistency with the future land use map, this would cause, if approved, this request would cause the future land use map for this site to be changed to moderate-density residential. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Questions for staff? All right, let's bring forward the applicant.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
You mentioned that some of the neighbors have been concerned about cut-through traffic.
Yes.
So I know there are improvements proposed for Capitol Boulevard, like, and the connection with Thornton would be removed and a interchange at Perry Creek. How would that affect that cut-through traffic, or would it affect the cut-through traffic for that neighborhood? Would it address that concern?
Jason, you want to take that one?
Sure.
Is there a vicinity map that zooms out a little bit?
You have to go pretty far back.
This one? Hmm, okay. I'll use this. Yeah, as Ms. Bennett stated, Thornton Road here currently has access to Capitol Boulevard, kind of at the end of the street, as a, basically an at-grade intersection. And that NCDOT has a project to convert this portion of US-1 into a limited-access highway, basically from 540 all the way well north of Wake Forest. What... What we expect that to be, and the planning for that is not done. NCDOT put a bit of a stop to that a few months ago, and it hasn't restarted to my knowledge, is to put an interchange at the Perry Creek-Durant interchange, which is kind of in this direction. And then also extend a frontage road along the east side of Capitol Boulevard, US-1, north of the Neuse River into the town of Wake Forest where the next interchange would be. And I cannot recall the exact name of that street that would have an interchange. So that effect, I'm going to draw next to this on here. You would have an interchange with Perry Creek and access towards the site. You would have Thornton Road coming to a frontage road, and then another interchange, and no access in between. So I don't know that that has a direct effect on what's happening around here. What it does mean is that in the future, when we plan to extend Thornton Road across the river and tie it to, towards Ligon Mill and US-401, that access to this street extension, of the Ligon Mill extension, is probably a little bit more important. And it does mean that there's a lot of improvements coming in this area with that frontage road. It should move traffic faster onto US-1, through US-1, but it will probably be a little less direct in general. Does that answer the question?
Yes. Okay, thank you. What's the soonest any of those improvements will be on the ground approximately?
My recollection of their timeline was that they were looking at doing construction kind of 2025 timeframe. They would be doing a design-build, so within a larger two- or three-year construction window, any number of those things could come online at different points in that. And given that what I communicated was our understanding of NCDOT's direction, it is not a set direction yet. It's very hard to tell how they'll implement that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
On Google Maps, there's a little loop, this Thornton Road loop, in the upper-left corner there. Is that publicly maintained, or is that a private?
This right here?
No, it's in the little square, upper-left of the site. It's just a loop.
Like this?
Yeah.
No, that is a private access way right now.
All right, any more questions for staff? Let's bring the applicant forward. The applicant and his supporters will have 10 minutes. And if there's anyone that's come here to speak in support or in opposition, please come forward to the front and sit in the front chairs so that we can get you to the podium quickly.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Adam Ashbaugh. I'm with ESP Associates. I'm also here with the applicant, Tara Moore Holmes. As John noted in his staff report, the proposed rezoning is consistent with several policies. Actually, let me see if I can pull up our Thank you, sir. Now can you just use these toggles? Okay. Thanks, John. So again, as John noted in his staff report, the proposed rezoning is consistent with several policies outlined in the comprehensive plan, namely conditional-use district, compact development, reinforcing the urban pattern, the density transition, housing variety, infill, and zoning for housing. The zoning conditions that we've proposed as a part of this request were shaped primarily as a result of feedback received in three meetings with neighbors. We had a neighborhood meeting back before Thanksgiving. We've also had two citizen advisory council meetings that were all very well-attended. We consistently heard some of the same concerns from neighbors, which were, number one, density; number two, traffic; number three, buffering of the adjacent properties; and number four, stormwater. The slide presentation that we've got here was created so that we could go through each of these concerns and explain to you how we've addressed them, either through our plan or with some of the conditions that we've offered. So first, in terms of consistency with surrounding densities, you can see by the slide here that aside from the Park at Perry Creek, which was developed nearly 17 to 20 years ago, the predominance of development in this area has been between six and 12 dwelling units per acre. We've offered a condition, condition number three, which caps our density at seven and a half dwelling units per acre. This is fairly consistent with the Addison Preserve, the townhome project that's just south of our site. And it's well below some of the more recent townhome approvals of Thornton Place, Thornton Creek. We've also offered zoning condition number six, which restricts the allowable uses, specifically eliminating the right-to-do apartment buildings in this. This proposed density that we're recommending here also provides appropriate transition and buffering from the existing waste transfer station that's just to the north of Thornton Road here. And we feel like our density is appropriate to transition from that waste transfer station and the future City Raleigh Public Park to the existing single-family residential detached housing in Castleberry and the Park at Perry Creek. It also provides for an appropriate housing type adjacent to this future City Raleigh parkland to the east. Second, and probably, how do I erase these arrows? Maybe I need some guidance there. Thank you. All right, thank you. Again, second and probably the primary concern raised was that of traffic. The site sits in close proximity to the Wildwood Forest Elementary School. And we've heard about problems experienced by the Park at Perry Creek residents regarding safety of pedestrians and children. To alleviate the concern of our project adding more traffic to the internal street system there, we've offered a couple of conditions. Number seven, which restricts the construction entrance to the site to Thornton Road here. And we also, as John mentioned, we initially offered another proposed condition, which would eliminate vehicular connection to Neuse Forest Road here, providing only a bike and pedestrian connection there. However, this second condition was subsequently removed at the direction of city staff as they deemed it to be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. However, we are willing to recommit to this offer based upon your guidance and the guidance and direction of city council. So should you and the town council deem this to be appropriate, we'll work with staff to re-include it with our rezoning request. The slide also shows some of the planned improvements that you guys were asking about, and Jason described in terms of Capitol Boulevard and the limited-access roadway that will happen there. It also shows the future alignment of Thornton Road as it extends to the east and ultimately connects across the river to Ligon Mill Road. You might have noticed the irregular shape of our parcel. This was necessary to allow the existing property owners to retain their homes while providing a roadway connection from the north side to the south side of the proposed property. We also had extended an offer to the Parks Department and Transportation Department to dedicate a portion of this Thornton Road realignment and to actually build half of it. But we were told at the time that because the plans for the city park had not yet been developed to a stage where they were comfortable defining exactly where that road right-of-way should be, that they recommended that we keep the plan the way it was. So again, we're more than happy to work with staff, elected officials, to eliminate the redundancy of that road between our project and the future Thornton Road realignment. The next concern that I'd like to address is the one of buffering our proposed townhome development from the two single-family residential subdivisions, both west and south of our proposed site. This first slide shows both the existing condition, as well as our proposal along the portion of our site which abuts the Park at Perry Creek. Here. There is an existing, as you pointed out, there is an existing driveway and access into the site where the two existing homes are. And this existing gravel drive and access easement that's located along that edge, we intend to abandon that easement and replace it with a landscape buffer. That condition is included as condition number one in our proposal. These neighbors also asked for, and we've included, a six-foot privacy fence there. The second slide here shows the common boundary between our site and the Castleberry subdivision to the south. The neighbors here were mainly concerned about the preservation of trees. So again, we've included conditions number two and four to protect that existing vegetative buffer.
You're down to 45 seconds.
Okay, I'll go through the last one quickly. The Castleberry residents also expressed concerns about how our project might impact their properties from storm drainage. They've described issues that they're currently facing. And we want to make sure that we do not exacerbate these issues. So if you look at the existing drainage pattern, this site comes to here. In a future condition, we will be including stormwater control measures to treat and attenuate the runoff from the site. And we're also offering condition number nine, condition number nine in your packet that would commit to designing our stormwater system to handle a 24-hour, 25-year storm instead of the two-year, 10-year storms that are required by the UDO.
So I have a question for you about what you were just finishing up saying. You said there's a condition that you're planning to add about this stormwater.
It should be in your packet.
It is already there.
Condition number nine, I believe.
Okay, so nine is what you were trying to get us to at the very end there. Not something else that's coming along.
I think it's eight in our packet because the connector that was originally eight was removed.
Okay, yes, it's true.
Oh, yeah, good point, good point.
All right, any questions for the applicant at this point?
I just had a quick question. So just to clarify, are you proposing to tie into both developments to the west and the south?
Our original condition that we offered at the request, really, of the neighbors was to not have a vehicular connection to Neuse Forest Road, but simply create a pedestrian and bike connection there, have our main entrances out to Thornton Road. And of course, we've provided, or we have opportunities to connect to Thornton Road as it gets realigned and reconnected. So that was the one that we felt was most impactful to the existing elementary school there. And so we felt it was prudent to listen to the concerns of the adjacent property owners and offer that condition to limit that to pedestrian and bike connection. However, as I stated, the direction from staff was that should we stick by that condition, it would be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. So again, we're willing to offer it. We think that it's important, if it's important to the adjacent property owners, it's important to us. And so we're willing to, again, go by your direction and guidance of both you and the town council and work with staff to create an appropriate condition to make that just a pedestrian and bicycle connector and eliminate vehicular connection, if that is appropriate and if that is the desire of this board.
Just to clarify, that's for both connections.
Well, we feel from an emergency access standpoint, and really to allow these folks to get out easier, it would be prudent for that connection to remain. If you, let me see, let me see if I can go back a couple of slides.
Yeah, I was just hoping for clarity on which one you were planning to connect.
Just Neuse Forest Road, we think, is the most critical. These folks back here in Castleberry, they are limited to one point of access, and they have a very circuitous way to get back out. We feel like very few of our residents will use that exit, however, for emergency vehicle access and actually for them to be able to find their way through our neighborhood, back out to Thornton Road. We think it's important that that connection be retained.
Yeah, thank you.
So I do have a question about the property in between the two legs of your property. So that property owner is selling you these parcels, is that right?
Yes, their broker is also here today. If you have specific questions about the intent of the existing property owners, he would probably be able to answer those.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant at this time?
I have a question for staff regarding the pedestrian right-of-way.
Okay.
I just don't know enough. Is there, you said it's, or staff has recommended that it not be included because it is inconsistent with the comp plan. Is there any sort of concern about privatizing bicycle paths or anything like that as well? Or what, can you elaborate on the whole?
So it's inconsistent with the comp plan largely because of our policies directing us to connect streets and to make sure that we don't funnel traffic to fewer points of access. And the more connections we have, the less that any one of them is important, and the less that any one of them have very much traffic. In the very long term, and having, I'm going to actually go back and use the applicant's slides because this, I think, was very helpful. Part of the reason that it is probably not a good idea to prohibit that connection is that it limits access of this neighborhood to get to Thornton Road and to get in this direction. And so what the effect of it would be is that people wishing to head east will continue to drive west through the neighborhood, loop back around by the elementary school, and then head to the west. So we're thinking in the very long term here. To answer your question about the bike and pedestrian connection, the condition as it was submitted to staff was not a bike and pedestrian connection. It was actually worded as a sidewalk. It could have been changed to be something that was more than that. And if it was insisted to submit that, that would definitely be better. But there's some lack of clarity about how long that would be, how it would be lighted, how it would be visible, how it could be policed. And generally, putting a sidewalk on a neighborhood street is easy for neighbors to monitor what's going on, to see what's happening, to have eyes in the street, to have police be able to come through. Excuse me, if it's just a sidewalk, then there's a lot of questions about what is the easement around that? Who maintains these things? How are they lighted? And so on and so forth. So that is a concern, and it ends up becoming something that's privately maintained, probably. But it doesn't mean that we never want to have bike, pedestrian only. It's just that it's not quite as useful or as navigable to people.
So one other point of clarity. So the conditions that we're looking at, does the landscape yard prohibit a vehicular connection to the west there? Is this condition prohibiting it?
I don't believe so, but I would have to defer to my planning colleagues on that. It shouldn't.
Because I didn't see a specific condition in here that prohibits connectivity to the west.
Yeah, so the site plan standards would be to connect two sub streets. Actually, this alignment, I think, would probably be much better if it were I, actually, this alignment, I think, would probably be much better if it were done kind of like this, so that the most, it is a little bit less obvious to get to Thornton Road, or it's a little bit more obvious to get to Thornton Road rather than Neuse Forest Road. But the buffer in between should be instead of, or in places where there is not a street stubbed. And maybe John can confirm that for me.
The case that you have before you has no conditions that would prohibit those, both of those street connections from being made. So, as currently proposed, if this is approved, they almost certainly will be required to connect to both Neuse Forest and Brambleberry.
Also, just for clarity's sake, there's another eventual future point of access here, that is, the parcels not being in this case, presumably, at some point in the long-term future, those would also be subdivided. And having this street connected in here, it's going to be appropriate to connect to that. And lacking this connection, now, we have one point of access to that neighborhood, which concentrates the, any traffic trying to get to the school onto one place rather than dividing it between two. So, I think, we feel that the comp plan's pretty clear that this sort of connectivity is appropriate and desired.
Any other questions for staff before we ask members of this public to come up and speak?
The only other question I have is, not traffic-related, but green space-related. It was the buffer that goes along the two subdivisions, is that all the green space that's being proposed and maintained?
Yeah, in a sense, yes. So, again, as noted earlier, a development plan for this site for townhouses would be required to have a 10% tree conservation area and a 10% outdoor amenity area. And so, it's pretty likely that they could come close to their 10% tree conservation just using those two buffer areas. They might have some additional that they would have to record in other places on the site. But, yeah, that's, 10% is, so, you know, an acre and a half.
Any other questions?
I have a question. How far in the future is the extension of Thornton Road? Maybe that was already mentioned, I missed it.
I think that depends a lot on development of the park and development in both this area and on the other side of the river, and how that gets prioritized. And generally, the more density and the more we see a need for that link in the network, the higher that project is going to come up. I think we're certainly following the park in that the City Transportation Department would be looking to get the street through the park before the park planning was ready to help decide where is most appropriately aligned. And that was alluded to by the applicant, because they had asked, could they build it up to a point to provide access as a, as a kind of a public-private partnership? And the Parks Department, they're not sure what environmentally is where, they don't know how they might use this land, so they didn't want to go any further down that road. It is a longer-term project. It's not something that in five or six years we'll be doing, but maybe sometime after that point, I would think.
All right, we've used up the time for supporters, so is there anyone who came to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the table. So, what are your thoughts?
Seems to be consistent with the area, it doesn't seem to be too out of place, in my opinion. Some of the other concentration of townhomes nearby, I think, I think it's a good transition, and it provides housing supply.
I don't think I'm ready to vote on this today.
Okay, can you state why?
Yeah, so, my, the presentation today is giving me a much more favorable impression, but my initial concern is there's heavy industrial use across the street, and this, my understanding of the way this was zoned was as a, potentially, a buffer between the neighborhoods and the industrial use, and I, I guess I'm not so concerned about the existing neighborhoods as this new neighborhood be putting, being put in next to this heavy industrial use. And right now, Thornton is basically a dead end where there's potentially a lot of industrial traffic, and then we're adding residential onto that, traffic onto that, and I guess I'm just not totally comfortable with it at this point.
Any other thoughts? I personally am a bit concerned that there is so much opposition to this by the neighbors, and I know that there have been some conditions put in place to try to mitigate those concerns. And so, I would be willing to put this into committee of the whole and invite the neighbors to come out and to speak. We have had no turnout here today, and also to give you time to process. And I think we need to determine whether there are any asks of staff or the applicant that they could either bring back at the next planning commission meeting or at the committee of the whole. Or, if people on the commission, if there are enough people on the commission who are ready to just deal with this today, that's the other option. So, I see this as, we either need more input or time to process this case, either, and bring it back either the next full planning commission, or bring it to the committee of the whole, or we rule on it today. But if we hold it for another meeting, then I think we need to be clear about what it is that we're trying to either achieve through staff input or applicant input. So, what are your thoughts?
I'm inclined to give a little bit more time for discussion, just in light of the fact that the neighbors came out opposed to it pretty strongly, just to give an opportunity to find some common ground there.
Did we receive any, did we receive any emails specifically about this?
I checked my inbox, and I could not find any.
Okay, so, we don't have any specific feedback from them, so...
Right, agreed. I mean, that is one of the factors here that is odd to me, that we've had no input from the individuals, from the public in email, nor did we have anybody show up here today in opposition. But, at the CAC recently, when was the vote taken at the CAC?
February.
So, were conditions changed after that vote at the CAC?
Well, the condition to prohibit the connection to Neuse Forest Road was offered after that, but then subsequently removed because of the policy inconsistency and the stormwater condition.
Okay, was added.
Was added after the CAC vote.
So, there doesn't seem to be a large public outcry, other than in the CAC, and so, I'm really not, I'm not sure how to interpret that at this point, but I am concerned about that vote at the CAC.
I'd be curious to know if the opposition would go away if the pedestrian connection were allowed. You know what I'm saying? Are they opposing it primarily because they were worried about the cut-through traffic? And if that pedestrian, bicycle, pedestrian were allowed, would that opposition go away? And is there a way that certain conditions could be put in to address staff's concern about not having that vehicular connection? That all made sense.
Is it a one or the other, or can you do, can you mitigate both? Is that what you're asking?
Right.
Yeah.
It sounded like the bike path.
We probably need staff to tell us about that, so...
Like, how to improve that?
So, putting in a condition that would prohibit vehicular access would be inconsistent with the comp plan, and we, you know, I drafted the staff report language describing that situation and responding to the applicant's engineer's statements about that condition. The code requires there to be a certain level of justification for these conditions. I don't think that any improving of that is going to change that aspect of it. There could be an improving of how bad it is in terms of providing a little bit more public benefit as a bike and pedestrian connection, rather than just saying there'll be a sidewalk. So, there is an opportunity for improvement, but that isn't going to eliminate the street connectivity inconsistency.
So, we would have to be okay with the inconsistency to get the condition added back in as a bike pedestrian?
Yes.
Attachment? But we would have to rule that that inconsistency didn't rise to the level that stopped us from moving forward with the case.
Correct.
Okay.
This is just to assist in the conversation of how to work with the neighbors and the residents. You know, it sounds like that area, and it might not be a bike path, because I think some of the things is that the residents might not be educated or knowledgeable about how that traffic would impact them in the future, and so, they could make a decision today that's based on, oh, I want, you know, a bike path, because that sounds great, but, you know, they're causing themselves pain in the future, so I don't want to encourage that. But maybe that there's some sort of, you know, redesign that will make it appealing to, and I know that might not be for traffic, but some sort of redesign that makes it appealing to the residents in that particular area that can, like, trade.
The one thing that does occur to me, seeing this sketch, is if there's a way, and I don't know that this is possible, to require the connection to not be, you know, to not require a turn to get to Thornton Road in terms of the site design. That might be something the applicant could offer that would mitigate the concerns, because as I see this, it does look like, you know, if I'm trying to get to Thornton Road or Wildwood Forest or Perry Creek, I might want to go through, because I'd take two more turns to get up to Legg and Mill, if they can, if we can design the subdivision such that the obvious straight path is to Thornton Road, and then you'd have to turn to get into the neighborhood and have a reason to do so, that would be beneficial. So, we'll have to explore whether that's possible, and maybe make some recommendations to the applicant.
Can you draw your concept, just so that...
Yeah, so, I'm going to draw over this, because I know that these screens can get a little washed out. What this looks like to me is a street, a street, and a street. And what my suggestion would be to find a way to have a street and then a street, so that you are almost at Thornton Road before you get to that connection. And exactly what the curvature of that is and, you know, where they connect is only conceptual. We do need to plan to have a street stubbed into this direction for the eventual subdivision of the parcels that are not included in this case, but there may be other ways to do that, too.
So, is there a way to write a condition that would capture your concept? Or would that...
I don't know. I just thought of that when I was sitting here. I would, I hope there is, and we'll look at that, and I'll see if we can find a way to do that.
So, if we hold this case at the table, it gives you two weeks to consider whether a condition could be written that might...
Well, and it gives them opportunity to decide if they want to offer that condition as well.
Right, exactly, exactly. So, is that...
Yeah, I think, just maybe add something else about the appeal to tackle the residents.
I'll add that I think connectivity is important, and I can't, I can't support connecting to one neighborhood and not the other with vehicular traffic. I also did have a question about, I don't think you can answer this, Jason, maybe you can, but, maybe can, 25-year storm, is that a standard measurement in our stormwater department?
A 25-year storm event is a pretty typical metric of storm events, so it is one that's used for just, you know, how meaningful was that particular 24-hour rainfall period? Any time interval can be designed and engineered for a stormwater control measure, it's just a, you just do a different math equation. So, it's, yeah, they, I guess your question is, does that mean something to a stormwater engineer in terms of benefits for the adjacent properties? Is that kind of the question?
Yeah, it just doesn't seem like that much, especially being right along the Neuse River.
The thing to keep in mind about stormwater control measure conditions is that increasing the storm year basically only takes, has an effect once you hit that amount of rainfall. So, in any storm event, you have a period of time during which there's going to be a certain amount of water that comes out of the sky, and so, in the first, the first six hours of a 24-hour period, that's a 25-year storm event, you will have a two-year storm event within that period at some point. And then sometime during that period, you will also reach a threshold of a 10-year storm event, right? So, you're, and then if you keep raining, you'll have eventually a 25-year event. And so, the stormwater device is going to treat, it doesn't know the difference between those things. So, the amount of water that's coming out of the outfall of the stormwater device is the same for that beginning period of the 24 hours, no matter how it's designed. And so, it really is that end of that period, when you have, get to that 25-year storm event, that's when it's going to kick in, and you would have additional runoff that now you wouldn't, that you won't have because you have a better stormwater device. But up until that point, up until the 10-year point, your perceived impact at the other side of that outfall is going to be the same.
I just want to add for the record, my search of email was wrong because I tried 53-19, and we did get at least one email for 53-2019. So, we did have someone reach out to us that is in opposition to this and left a phone number. So, that's something that we could follow up on if we hold for two weeks, so. So, what is the pleasure of the commission at this point? I hear at least a couple of folks who are interested in holding the case for another meeting. So far, I don't hear any need to go to the committee of the whole, so that would bring us back to the 24th of March. And we have had some direction to staff to investigate this potential condition for a road form that might appeal to neighbors more, and also give the applicant some opportunity to consider that possible condition. So, is that what we want to do, is hold it at the table for two weeks?
I would support that.
All right. So, is the applicant okay with us holding it for two weeks to give you guys some time to talk with staff, and staff some opportunity to look into this road potential condition?
Yeah, thank you. I guess, let me just clarify a couple of things. The three meetings that we've had with neighbors, like I said, we have had considerable turnout, both in November and January and February. And so, the conditions that we've offered were very much shaped and modified in reaction to and in support of the concerns that we heard from the neighbors. So, the conditions that we have offered really are a direct reflection of the feedback that we got and trying to alleviate the concerns that they've made. Now, I do understand Jason's concern about maybe clarifying that, the condition, as opposed to just offering a sidewalk, that we would propose both a bicycle and pedestrian connection there, and clarifying that wording, as well as the wording that John mentioned with regard to the buffers, that is not a problem. If it's the pleasure of this board to hold it until the next meeting, that's fine with us. We want to do the right thing for both the city and for the neighbors. The big question I would have as that relates to that is, I'm not sure without, having addressed what we think are the major concerns of the neighbors, I'm not sure how we would modify, other than clarifying the language that staff has brought up, I'm not sure how we would modify our proposal, our rezoning, or any of the conditions.
But you've removed the condition about the sidewalk connectivity, right?
Well, it's been removed, really, at the direction of staff, but we will defer to your direction and council's direction on that. So, it's one of those things that we're leaving out there as a possibility.
Right.
And again, we'll be happy to work with staff.
I think that's what we're saying, is that we'd like to have you and Jason explore that possibility, because I think we'd like to see if a street connection, a real street connection makes sense there, instead of just a bike pedestrian access. So, I think if it could be made more palatable in the way that Jason is suggesting, that that might satisfy, you would be consistent with policy, and perhaps the neighbors would be less...
We are happy to do that. In fact, when we first learned that they were not comfortable with that condition, we did a lot of research on the connectivity and the safety aspects of it. So, we have some justification that we can share with Jason, that we can share with this council or in this board two weeks from now.
All right, great, thank you so much.
Happy to do it.
So, we'll table this case for two weeks. Thank you, we'll see you on March 24th. All right, moving on to Z120, Oberlin Road. All right, moving on to Z120, Oberlin Road.
All right. Good morning. So this is a request to rezone about six and a half acres on Oberlin Road, just south of Daniels Middle School, from currently R-ten residential, ten, ten units per acre, to residential mixed-use, seven stories with conditions, and the conditions address the height. In terms of CAC votes, there were two, so this is within the five-point CAC, and that vote was not in favor. It was five supporting, seven against, and three abstained from the vote. And then Hillsborough Wade, which is directly across Oberlin Road from the site, also had a presentation on it and took a vote. That was the similar result. Ten were in favor, nineteen were opposed to it. Commission's deadline is in June. So taking a look at the zoning in the area, again, currently R-ten, R-six to the north, but that's actually the middle school, so fairly intensive use there. Across the street, R-ten. You've got a node of commercial uses at Fairview in Oberlin. And again, mostly residential to the north. So what that looks like in practice, you can see the site there in the center, the school to the north, a little bit further north, another commercial node, and some mixed-use development and multi-story housing at Glenwood in Oberlin. And then, again, mostly residential otherwise, other than the Fairview mixed-use area. Couple of views, these are all from or very near Oberlin Road. So the first one is looking south from Daniels towards the site. The second one is actually at the line between Daniels and the site, so again, directly adjacent to the middle school. The bottom two, the one on the left, is almost from Oberlin, from Ashland, looking directly into the site to the east. And then the last one is looking north, again, from Oberlin. So I mentioned the conditions. One addresses height, which is limited to no more than... So the request is for seven stories, but the condition limits it to no more than five stories. Gets a little bit more specific than that as well. So within sixty feet of Oberlin, so along Oberlin Road, height is limited to three stories, except for the portion along Oberlin that's also close to Daniels. So at that point, height limited to four. And then the interior of the site, that's where five stories would be permitted. Also excludes several uses, so that residential mixed-use district does, in some limited circumstances, allow some commercial uses, but this prohibits nearly all commercial uses, office, restaurant, retail, and so on. It does address density. So in essence, if the development does not include a group living use, specifically assisted living, retirement community, rest home, there's some other similar uses in that category. If it does not include one of those uses, then the density is limited to the existing ten units per acre. So a little bit more of a comparison between existing and proposed. Call out the difference in terms of units. So existing, sixty-four. Although if it were one of those congregate care uses that's proposed, that would allow for a double of the existing. Estimate potential number of units is four hundred and twenty-four. Again, only if it's one of those group living uses. It would stay the same if it's any other use. Setbacks are fairly similar, so there's none that are specifically part of the zoning in terms of a frontage that would call for, a specific build-to. But there is, with an apartment building type, a build-to of between ten and fifty-five feet, same with townhouse. That would be the case with the proposed zoning. Some building types could be allowed. A rest home might be considered a civic building rather than an apartment building. That typically includes a drive-through, drop-off area, and some additional, like a cafeteria use. So with that building type, which is possible for a rest home, there is a setback of ten feet, but not a specific build-to. And then the side setbacks are, and rear are relatively similar. Zero on the side, and then six. Currently twenty to the rear would be zero or six as proposed. In terms of carbon emissions, this checks these boxes pretty cleanly in this case. So this area is more walkable than the average in the city, so likely are more walking trips. It has a better transit score and transit service, and I'll show you a few maps, than the city average. So likely more transit usage and shorter driving trips overall. It also allows smaller and more efficient building type units, so the townhouse or apartment building types. So current bus service is actually relatively good here at this site. On Oberlin, you have the Route sixteen, comes every thirty minutes. And then the site approximately halfway through that overall parcel. And then along St. Mary's, you currently have Route eight, also every thirty minutes. And then on Glenwood, you have a thirty-minute route as well. In terms of what's proposed, and in fact, the Glenwood route is proposed to take effect this year, increasing frequencies from Crabtree to downtown to fifteen minutes. So that would be a pretty core part of the future, well, actually being implemented now, frequent transit network in Raleigh, and then a similar plan along Oberlin as well. So fifteen minutes, that's a few more years out, but both of these core parts of that frequent transit network. In terms of affordability, does add to housing supply. No specifically subsidized units. Does permit a variety of housing types, smaller lots than the average, and it's within walking distance of transit. So the future land use map designates this entire area between Oberlin and, not quite St. Mary's, but the rear of the property, as medium-density residential. And that envisions the kinds of building types that would be allowed here, apartment or townhouse or that civic building, in the case of a rest home. In terms of height, it specifically envisions three or four stories as being appropriate in areas where frequent transit is existing, up to five stories. So that's the case here. And again, the condition essentially limits height along Oberlin to three or four stories, with the four-story section being closer to Daniels, and then the five-story more to the interior of the site. In terms of urban form, this is designated as a transit emphasis corridor, which wants to see a more walkable building form, and the request is consistent with that. The apartment building type has requirements that make it closer to the street. Any of the potential building types typically do not allow here, typically do not allow or encourage a lot of parking in between the building and the street, so consistent with that guideline. So consistent with the comprehensive plan overall, those two maps. Several key policies, a lot of these are fairly common ones, but I'll call out a few, consistent with the future land use map. Policies that encourage more compact and efficient development, compact development, greenhouse gas reduction, housing variety, more of a range of housing options. And one that we don't see quite as often, the last one, aging in place. And that specifically states an encouragement for a universal design for all ages and abilities, and lifecycle housing to facilitate the ability of homeowners and neighborhood residents to age in place in their homes and neighborhoods. So this, very consistent with that idea of not necessarily having to move out of your neighborhood when you're ready for a different housing type related to your age or ability. So no inconsistent policies. Deadline is June. I'll mention the CAC votes did take place for this. Just to kind of broadly characterize, some of the questions or concerns that were brought up included the scale of the development, potential loss of trees there. Also, specific focus on traffic. So analysis, because there's two options here. One is the density stays the same if it's not that group living housing type. So obviously, no effect there. If it is that senior housing use, those produce many fewer trips than non-senior housing. So the traffic, in fact, was relatively modest. It didn't require a specific traffic study at the time of rezoning. The estimate found about two dozen additional trips compared to the current zoning in the peak hour, so one every couple of minutes. There were also some specific concerns about the proximity of the middle school to the site. And that certainly, safety is important, period. And transportation staff has been looking at some ways, irrespective of the outcome of the zoning case, to make sure that there's not some safety issues there. But the broader principle, and the concern was specific, that older drivers might be hazardous in that situation. But I think there's no principle in the comprehensive plan that states that facilities for older residents should be far away from schools. And in fact, the policy that I just mentioned is almost directly the reverse of that. So I think if there are some issues, there are some ways to address them in a different way. So that's all I have, unless there are some questions.
Questions for staff? Thank you. Let's bring the applicant forward. And if there's anyone in here that plans to speak in support or opposition, please come forward to the front row in preparation for your opportunity.
Great. Good morning. Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners, here on behalf of the applicant, Liberty Senior Living. With me this morning is Will Purvis and Thad Moore with Liberty Senior Living, as well as Chris Boney and Steve Hepler with LS3P, project architect. Travis Flue with Kimley Horn, our traffic engineer. And then Lofty Smith with Withers Ravenel, our civil engineer for the project. So if there are some technical questions that they can answer, they are here to do so. Appreciate Jason's thorough staff report and presentation. We'll try not to be redundant on that. I will emphasize that the purpose for this rezoning is to allow a congregate care retirement community, or, excuse me, a continuing care retirement community that includes both independent living units, as well as healthcare units that involve memory care, assisted living, and skilled nursing units. And again, the RX district allows that. And again, Jason reviewed those conditions that both limit the uses to really kind of a pure residential project. Limits the height along Oberlin Road and in the center of the site. And then also limits density to what is currently allowed for all non-group living residential units. So keeping the status quo on single-family townhomes and apartments. So to touch on a few of the items that Jason mentioned that were discussed. So first, just from an outreach conversation with the community standpoint, we held a neighborhood meeting that was very well attended, I believe over eighty attendees there, kind of open-house style over the course of about three hours. We also presented three times, three different times, to the five-point CAC, as well as a courtesy presentation to the Hillsborough Wade CAC, given that they're across Oberlin Road from us. In addition, we met and had multiple conversations with the Wake County Public School Systems Real Estate Director, Betty Parker. And we also met with Mr. Gaudet, the principal of Daniels Middle School. So on the matter of traffic, again, want to highlight that within this kind of area that is being rezoned, the number of existing units that would be impacted by the rezoning case is about sixty-eight units. And so our trip generation numbers were very similar to those that were provided in the staff report. Ours were a little less. I don't know if we were, again, providing kind of a comparison over what the units, you know, to the units that are there on the ground today that would be removed. But again, just in the staff report, it's essentially an additional car every two and a half minutes on Oberlin Road. Based on our trip generation analysis and distribution analysis, that represents about a 0.5% increase of trips on Oberlin Road. So a very minimal amount of trip increase. And certainly, in the peak hour, a very minimal increase in the number of trips in the peak hour, both in the AM and in the PM. I'll note that redevelopment of this site will require the dedication of right-of-way along Oberlin Road, on the site's frontage. That will also involve the additional pavement along this frontage, moving the curb back, providing a new sidewalk in that area. But what that additional right-of-way and pavement allows is that for this section of Oberlin Road, to have a travel lane in each direction and a full center turn lane, which doesn't currently exist along this segment of Oberlin Road. It does, just north of the site, beginning at Daniels, as you go to the intersection with Glenwood Avenue. And what that will allow is left-hand turns onto Ashland that currently, right now, are kind of backing up traffic on Oberlin Road, as well as onto Askew. And then again, we anticipate having a site driveway in this area and this area as well. And that would allow for left-hand turns coming southbound on Oberlin into the site. And so while we're adding a very minimal amount of traffic, we are increasing the capacity of Oberlin Road. With regard to height, I'll just note our three-story, again, we're limiting three stories along majority of our Oberlin Road frontage here. And those three-story buildings will be over a hundred feet away from the closest structures across Oberlin Road. Our four-story area, which is kind of in this area here, closest to Daniels along Oberlin Road, we expect the building in that area to be over two hundred feet from the closest structures across Oberlin Road. And then kind of the five-story portion of the development back here, over three hundred feet away from the closest structures across Oberlin Road, over four hundred feet to the closest structures along Wake Drive up here, and then over seven hundred feet away from the closest structures along St. Mary Street to our east. So again, we are locating the five-story height in the center of our area, in the center of the overall kind of country club home site, and then reducing the height closest to other residential uses. Again, just on a few of the items that Jason mentioned in terms of discussion at our CAC meetings. He mentioned kind of our proximity to the middle school and safety. It seems like a lot of those concerns exist today, absent redevelopment of this property, and that there's really not anything about the redevelopment of this property that would exacerbate any of those issues. Again, when we have to improve Oberlin Road, we'll be adding additional pavement width. We'll have crosswalks across our site driveways. And again, we've had meetings and conversations with Wake County Public School Assistant Real Estate Director, who actually went to Daniels Middle School and is familiar with it, as well as the principal. And there was no opposition expressed by either one of them. In fact, I think there's a level of excitement about the kind of partnership opportunities kind of going both ways with the middle school, in terms of middle schools being able to volunteer at the independent living or healthcare building, and then independent living, folks that are living there, being able to volunteer at the middle school. And so we see this is a good opportunity for partnership, given our proximity to the middle school. Regarding the loss of trees, I'll just note that there's nothing about this request that is impacting our obligations under the UDO with regard to tree conservation. We are not adding a frontage district that would trump the tree conservation requirements. We understand that there are trees on the site. We have done a tree survey within our rezoning boundary area. And would note that I think essentially all of the trees are impacted by existing pavement, existing buildings, existing underground utilities, existing overhead power lines, or otherwise, you know, kind of dead, diseased, or hazardous trees. But again, that's an evaluation that will occur at the site plan stage, and there's nothing about this rezoning that is altering our obligations there. So in closing, I'll just highlight our case's consistency with the future land use map. Consistency... consistency with the comprehensive plan guidance on height, the key comprehensive plan policies focused on aging-in-place, housing variety, locating density along corridors programmed for higher frequency bus transit, and also density along corridors that are walkable to goods and services and restaurants, both to our south here at Fairview and Oberlin, as well as to our north at Glenwood Village. And again, we think it's reasonable and in the public interest for all of those reasons, and also given our conditions and our compatibility with the surrounding area in terms of scale and the roadway and transportation improvements that would come with redevelopment of this site. With that, we are here to address any questions that the commission may have. And again, we've got a full team here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. You had 10 seconds left. So any questions for the applicant at this time?
I'm sorry, and I apologize. You may have already said this. I'm looking at the report and it's, you're proposing 424 units? Is that, what's, what's the unit count?
No, so that is, that number is generated by the city's envisioned tomorrow analysis, based on whatever kind of is in that program. We are not proposing that many units in terms of the site plan that's, that's been prepared. We're much lower than that, in the range of 300 or so. And so our, what we anticipate being our trip generation is, you know, lower than what's in the staff report as well.
And the current use is kind of independent senior living with some congregate care? Is that?
You mean our proposed use?
And your proposed use is assisted memory care?
That's right. Assisted, living, memory care, skilled nursing units, and then independent living units. So folks that, again, 62 years of age and older, but that don't need medical services yet, can live in the independent living units. And then those who require memory care, some level of assistance and skilled nursing would be in the healthcare units.
So this would be kind of like an aging-in-place facility, right? You come in at 62 and it's, it's a longer-term, you know, vision for a resident to come in and kind of age in place and?
Correct.
In the later years, okay.
That's right. And that was something that we heard kind of throughout the process from a number of folks that grew up in the area, continue to live in the area, having an opportunity to kind of stay in the neighborhood as they get older, but then also, once you move there, the ability to stay there through all seasons as well.
Okay. And then just for clarification, so current rents, we've received a lot of feedback regarding rents, that it's, this is not considered affordable. Rents are 3,500, is that right? For 3,500 to 5,000 for?
Right. That was some, some of the numbers that we provided at the CAC. That's, that's correct.
And just to keep in mind that for the panel up here, a lot of that is covered by Medicare Medicaid. So it's not just straight-up rent, just to, because there's a lot of services that are provided.
That's right. That's correct. And I, and I'll just note, because there was some conversation around this, obviously we're impacting 68 existing units. I will note that the owner has, again, the current property owner, who owns all of country club homes, has committed to holding a housing fair and assisting with relocation of tenants in the existing units, finding a comparable situation in the area. This is something that he did when the Palms redeveloped off of Lake Boone Trail near Martin Middle School, and that was a successful kind of housing fair. And so he's committed to do that here as well.
Are they subsidized?
These units are not subsidized.
No, I mean the existing. So are these subsidized tenants that you're going to have to relocate?
No, no, the existing tenants are not subsidized. No. Their rents are, on a per-square-foot basis, are actually comparable to, you know, Oberlin Court, so.
But their rents are, because of the size of the units, are around $1,000?
That's right. The rents are lower because of the size of the units. But from a, also many of them obviously don't have the amenities in terms of the actual units themselves, given the age of the units relative to what, you know, more modern units are.
Mr. Birch, I have a couple of questions for you. So, you know, because I happen to be in the Five Point CAC, I saw the presentations and at least two of the meetings. I know that the folks at the meeting asked you about meeting with the principal. You obviously have met with the principal since that last meeting. So can you tell me something about that conversation with the principal? Because you obviously didn't have a chance to speak to the CAC about it, so.
Right. So, yeah, very positive meeting with Mr. Gaudet. It was probably more informational. He had kind of a couple of questions, but, you know, we brought up the concerns that we heard at the CAC about the kind of folks walking from across Oberlin Road. You know, he noted that they've got a Wake County Sheriff out there in the morning that allows for walkers to safely cross Oberlin Road. They have a crossing guard there in the afternoon, and that's for across Oberlin Road. But there's a number of kids that walk out the back as well. And so he did not have any concerns about the redevelopment of this property on kind of safety of, of his students and walkers and, you know, operationally during drop-off and pickup.
Okay. Because it sounded like a lot of people were concerned about the kids mobbing into the street during, during the times, especially after school. And so he didn't see any issues with this community?
Correct.
Development having an impact on that mobbing into the street?
Right.
Okay. The other question I had, you said you did a survey of the trees that are already on the site. And so can you tell me how many trees that are probably over 50 years old would have to be removed from the site? Because I know there are a lot of large caliber trees, caliper trees there. I mean, they're this big around.
Right. I don't have the actual number of, of trees. There are, like you mentioned, a number of larger trees that are on that site. Again, I referenced kind of the current impacts to those trees. There'll be an evaluation of whether they qualify for tree conservation at the time of site plan. I'll also note, again, we've gone pretty far down the road in terms of developing a site plan. We anticipate the vast majority of our parking being underground in a podium with a green roof on top of that, and heavily landscaped, and then also heavy landscaping around the site. Again, site plan's not a part of the, of the rezoning, but we've gone pretty far down the road, given where we are in the process, and understand that while we may be removing trees, we will try to plant new trees and, again, kind of cover those impervious services as best we can.
So can you tell if you'd be able to save any of those champion-like trees on the site?
I can't say that at this point. Again, many of those are already impacted by kind of existing conditions today, so.
Thank you. So, sorry, more questions for applicant?
I have a few questions as well. Excuse me. So I think you, just to clarify with the tree conservation, so you'll be meeting the code requirements for that, but you're not proposing anything that's above and beyond at this point?
That's correct.
Okay. In terms of the independent care units versus the assisted living and skilled nursing units, how many of the independent units do you have versus the other ones?
Yeah. I think right now, we're looking at in a range of 190 to 200 independent living units, the vast majority of which are single occupancy. They may be one-bedroom or two-bedroom, but even two-bedroom units are often single occupancy. And then we're looking in the range of about 90 to 100 healthcare units split evenly among skilled nursing, assisted living, and memory care. And pretty much all of those are also single occupancy rooms.
Okay, thank you. And I think I have a few questions for staff. Excuse me. Let's see. A little clarification on the heights of the building. I think you walked through pretty well. Oh, sorry. I had one more question for you, sorry. I think you walked pretty well, walked us through where the three, four, and five-story buildings are. When the other parcels of this development get developed in the future, what's, can you, what's the intent or what's the plan for those? Because those are the ones that are really going to be up against the residential units.
Right. So I'll say, folks who are proposing this rezoning, Liberty Senior Living, have only this portion of the property under contract. The current owner, Gordon Grubb, the Williams family, Clancy family, will retain the balance of the country club home site. That remains zoned, RTN, and any change to that would require a rezoning. But given where this portion of the property is located, the balance of the country club home site can continue to operate as it is. And so we don't know what their plans are, but we know that it's zoned RTN today, and it can continue to operate as is.
Thank you. Questions for staff, I think. So Oberlin, I'm so sorry, will be widened here, and it'll be, become a three-lane road with a center lane. What happens as Oberlin crosses over Fairview? Are there plans to continue that down the road? Because currently, there's a pretty bad bottleneck at the corner of Oberlin and Fairview. And I'm just wondering, what's the plan, or are there plans to address that in the future, your future?
The street plan for Oberlin Road is a two-lane divided all the way down to Mayview Road. So yeah, the comprehensive plan is to make that, that a consistent three-lane section or to install a median. There aren't any program projects to do that. One thing that I would, would add from a network standpoint is if we're able to add a left turn lane that does not exist kind of through this front, I went just a tiny bit too far, so I'm going to redraw that, across this frontage here, turning into Ashland Street for all of this part of the neighborhood will be a little bit more possible, where many of those people may be turning left, either turning right or turning left here. So it may shift the location of some of those lefts to help alleviate that bottleneck. But there aren't a particular project to, to do that. If the rest of the country club homes were to redevelop and regardless of rezoning, then those improvements would be carried all the way to Oberlin.
Okay. Let's see. I think, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions for the applicant or staff? All right. So if there's anybody who's here, who's here in support? You have 10 seconds to speak. But I don't, I don't see anybody coming forward. So people in opposition will have two minutes each. We ask you, please not repeat anything the previous speaker may have said. So I think we have a couple of people who are here to speak in opposition. Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Deirdre Denisheau. I'm a neighbor, and I also have a sixth grader at Daniels. I guess first of all, I'm concerned about the height of the five stories. I understand three might be okay. We've got the new fire-
Could you pull your microphone down to you, please?
We have the new firehouse that is, I guess, up to three stories, but otherwise, this neighborhood does not have anything close to that. A firehouse is the tallest building anywhere in the neighborhood. And so putting a five-story building even in the middle of this will stick out by far. Plus, I think topography-wise, that's a hill. And so I think that's going to be very high and really stand out in this area. And I just don't think that's at all consistent with the neighborhood or the area. Second, the, I know Mr. Gaudet, and he stands at the back of the school during drop-off and pickup. And so he wouldn't see the hundreds of kids that are walking down Oberlin. At that one little intersection, yes, there's a police officer. But going down the street, cars turning into the country club homes, that's what I'm worried about. I'm worried about the cars turning in, into that area, because there's way too many children walking by there, and there are no cops, and there's a nice sidewalk now. I don't know with all the driveways and what they're talking about. I'm very concerned about that. Plus, when you go up any increase in traffic, that Fairview and Oberlin intersection, there's still a lot of kids walking that way and crossing that street. So I'm concerned about that as well. And then also with the height, and this is just a question, is it five stories? Is that a set height, or is that a number of feet? Because again, I'm concerned with the parking garage, and then the first floor, and then does it start five stories? I don't know what that actually is, but it's just very high for that area.
All right, thank you.
My concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to come up and speak in opposition? All right. Do you think we could get a response to the height question?
Yes. Good question about the height. So the zoning condition, again, the request is for RX seven, seven stories. The zoning condition does limit height in floors. It doesn't speak to the height in feet, and the applicant may be able to provide a little bit more detail. So what that means effectively, there are, the city of Raleigh currently, for these, at least these residential districts, regulates height both in feet and stories. So for three stories, 50; for four stories, 62; for five stories, 75. So the condition would require that in stories, I'm looking at windows one, two, three, four, it would limit the height to that three, or four, or five. In feet, it means that it could exceed those specific limits for each height district.
Right. I think there was a question as to whether layers of parking would count as, as stories. And under the current UDO, part of the text change that looked at removing the height cap and feet for taller buildings specified that they are, that if you layer, say, a building with, with a parking podium, those podium layers count as part of the parking. I mean, it's, it's, it counts towards the story count, sorry. So maybe the applicant can address the seven-story request versus the five-story condition.
Yes. I'll touch on a couple of those things. So with regard to height, so I'll touch on what Kendra said. We are anticipating kind of an underground podium parking area that meets the definition of a basement, which is not a story. So what you will see, and again, that, that, we anticipate that being in this area here. So as you're driving this way on Oberlin Road, you'll see kind of three-story structure here. Oberlin is going down at this point, and we're anticipating, you know, that picking up essentially an additional floor on the bottom as that street is, is going down. So kind of a consistent roof line here, but picking up that additional story on the ground there. For the five-story area back here, we anticipate having five floors, you know, above grades, so five levels of windows, and the podium or that parking area being essentially fully underground accessed from back here. The grade here is such that we would have a retaining wall holding that up. And so again, even viewed from Daniels, we'd expect that podium to be, you know, not visible from Daniels Middle School. In terms of why the RX seven, and then the conditions on stories, frankly, the way that building height is calculated has changed multiple times over the last few years. And also, and that's just from a UDO standpoint, and I would say the way that those UDO provisions have been interpreted and applied at the administrative level at site plan has also changed multiple times. And we are proposing what could be construed as one building with many, many different sides. It's not a, it's not a square box, you know, with four sides that it can easily obtain what the average grade is of each of those sides of the building. It might have 20 sides, and there's no, you know, there's no certainty at this stage as to how height in feet would be calculated and what that would be for the building. But what we do have certainty on is what the story count is. And so that's why we have limited, limited it in terms of stories, but not put a feet cap on there, because at this stage, without being able to go through a site plan review process, not having- process, not having any certainty on how our height and feet would be calculated.
I know Site Plan is a ways off. Have you given any comfort to the residents regarding what the product would look like? I know that there's several different examples that are available on the website for the developer, but didn't know if there was one plan.
We have. I mean, from from day one, starting with our neighborhood meeting prior to filing, we showed the neighbors and anyone else a site plan that we were working with, as well as three renderings of the building, giving different perspective views, the three-story portion, the four-story portion, and the five-story portion. LS3P has been the architect for all of Liberty Senior Living's facilities. They treat each one differently because it's in a different location, a different context, with different predominant materials and styles in that area. So if you look at what they built in Carolina Bay in Wilmington, Wrightsville area, it's very different than what they did in Charleston, very different than what they did in Cary. For this location, some of the kind of inspirational buildings was the Carolina Inn in Chapel Hill brick, also the Fairview Row condos there in Five Points, those, again, brick. And so the architectural that we've shown here have been, you know, predominantly brick structures. But we have shared those throughout the process. And I'll just note, there was a just a comment about kind of the cars coming in and out of the.
Ken.
The facility.
Mr. Bauer.
Yeah.
You can start the two minutes because this is a response to the.
Yeah.
Two minutes or 10 seconds?
Two minutes. It gets two minutes to respond.
Let's see, I don't know if there's an aerial here that shows it better. But so there's currently an existing driveway serving a few units of the Country Club home site that is immediately adjacent to one of the primary access points for Daniels Middle School. We anticipate closing that cut and lining that lining it up with Ashland. So again, pulling a driveway away from another driveway at the middle school, we think will enhance safety. That was something that Betty Parker identified as a positive. We will be putting back six-foot-wide sidewalk, as well as painted crosswalks along our access points. We anticipate two along Oberlin Road, similar to the number of curb cuts that exist along this portion of the property today.
Thank you, Mr. Birch.
Thank you.
All right. Further discussion, the additional questions for staff? What's your pleasure? How would you like to move this along?
I feel like I would like to have a little bit better understanding of how the topography's working on there and how the buildings will sit, just to have a sense of what it'll be like. Sometimes structures with the podium structure podium parking end up being feeling really, really big, just so to have a better understanding of what that is. I do think that this housing stock is really needed in this city. It does seem very intense in terms of its density, and, you know, I'm not sure that the neighbors are probably too keen on that. So I'm sure, anyway, I'm not I'm not clear on that.
So you would like to hold for two weeks and ask the applicant to come back with some, perhaps some elevation information?
I would like to see some more information on that to have a better understanding of what we're kind of committing to. I defer also to the commission's wishes.
I'm I'm a little bit hesitant to that because whatever images we see doesn't mean that that's what's going to get built, and we don't know how Site Review's going to handle that. So, I mean, that seems a little arbitrary to me.
Yeah, I'm not looking for a building.
Right. We're looking for some height information.
I'm looking at the topos now, and anyway, maybe I just need to digest that some more.
Any other thoughts from other members?
Are we interested in any conversation regarding our thoughts of the project?
Yes.
Just before, I mean, because if we defer it, then people are kind of they're not privy to kind of our thoughts on.
Well, no, I mean, now is your time.
Okay.
Yeah, so please share what your thoughts are.
So some of my things just regarding affordable housing in general, the existing product is, in my opinion, is not very well maintained. It doesn't look very nice. I don't think it adds value to the community. I think it actually hurts the value of the community. However, there's something to be said for naturally occurring affordable housing, something that is existing, you know, that isn't going to be replaced by, you know, very, very high-end, pushing, you know, low and lower-income families out further, or seniors, for example. So that's one thing I'm just conflicted about. The other thing I'm conflicted about is the traffic, because I know that that road, Oberlin, is highly congested with the school there and on a number of levels because it's the access point from Glenwood to Cameron Village. Also, as a pro or as a, you know, consistency standpoint, I do think that this the the aesthetics of this particular building are kind of in keeping with the Oberlin apartment community that's a little bit up the road with the salad location. And so I do think it's kind of it's consistent there. I think the density, I mean, senior housing doesn't necessarily uptick a lot of traffic just because a lot of these folks are not going to be driving. They'll probably be using a community van. But it does feel dense. It feels very dense for the area. I'd be curious about some of the other apartments and what their density is, just kind of up along the road. Because I do think that that particular area is appealing and should have higher density just in terms of allowing more people access to a nice area in that regard.
Other thoughts from the commissioner?
I did want to add that also just understanding the site and kind of what what's envisioned for that site, having a understanding of the trees that are there currently and, you know, how they're disappearing, and is there any possibility of protecting at least some of them? There's some, I think, pretty magnificent trees there currently, just to at least understand what's happening.
So I'll add to my to the concern about the intensity. It does seem very intense and very tall for the area. So that's my major concern about this proposal. I do like the idea of having a continuing care facility in this spot because of the proximity to the neighborhood and to other members of the public, and the proximity to the school, and the opportunity for interaction between the the children at the school and the the folks living at the site. But I am concerned about the sheer denseness of what's being proposed there and about the massing towards the street and the massing in general on the property. So I think what I'm hearing is that we'd like a little more information from the applicant about some of the concerns that were raised here about massing and height, and also about potential saving of champion trees. So I heard that from several members. What's the wish of the the general folks on the commission?
So I'm happy to provide some thoughts. I I mean, looking at this and looking at the topo on iMaps and everything else, it it does seem like, I understand that there are some five-story areas, but having experience with setbacks and building mass, et cetera, a lot of these setbacks and the consideration that the applicant's making is very significant. It's hundreds of feet setback. The high point looks to be, at least via topo, on the northern side of Butting Daniels, where they have a substantial tree buffer. It's, I mean, this is, I think, a much, much-needed and critical housing product that we need in the city. It seems like a fantastic location. I mean, it's a half-mile from a grocery store. It's a 15-minute walk from Five Points. The ability for this community and cohort to really be inactive, you know, aging in place, cohort within the community seems like it has all these benefits. The applicant has reached out to the middle school, which seemed very positive. The realignment of the street to Ashland is also seems like all it does is make this a better situation, especially with the widening and improvements of the sidewalk and the street adding a turning lane. And so a little bit of me, it's just, I don't really know what else, you know, is going to... For me, I think that they have done a tremendous job to to really think through a lot of this. I understand that there are safety concerns with the school. I have to imagine as human beings that they're going and they've reached out to the middle school, that obviously, they don't want children being impacted, and will probably do everything they can to make it a safer location. I also think that they're going to have a bunch of their residents walking places and are going to want it to be a safe environment for them to walk because folks are not going to want to be there unless it's safe. And so I just, you know, and also part of me, I the I understand the the tree conversation. I think it's something that us as a commission, maybe we have to figure out like more objective ways to think about it because I personally don't have any old growth trees on any areas that I live, but a lot of my friends do, and a lot of them are starting to fall because they're so old. And there's also something to say in getting urban forestry involved to actually be like, well, honestly, some of these communities actually need, like, actually a new generation of trees. So I just think that there's a lot of variety and depth and details that I don't necessarily think we're going to get a straight answer out of if we hold it. I'm fully able and willing to move this forward today. I fully respect if other commissioners aren't, but I just wanted to, you know, that it just seems like they've really done a thorough job.
And if I may echo.
Oh, go ahead.
What Matt has said, listening to the conversations or hearing the feedback from the conversations, and I understand there's still some challenges, but when I think of citizen engagement and and trying to find common ground, this is a perfect example of doing that. And for me, this is almost like a model of how I would like to hear developers interacting with the community and conversations with the community and trying to find that that win-win situation as much as possible. So for for that reason, as well as the reasons that Commissioner Thomas Sulu has also stated, I'm ready to move this forward as well. And also, one more aspect about when we were talking about the green space and how encouraged that was when we were talking about the underground parking and how you were going to have green space within the parking, just trying to also put back what you what you have to take away. That's also very encouraging, as you're saying, with new generations of trees and just trying to minimize. My my sore spot is more so seeing just asphalt and shingles, but actually how we can make have green zones, which are very important for for not only beautification, but also long-term implications. So as I said, I'm ready to move this one forward as well.
So before we take a vote, I want to make sure that we don't take a vote where we potentially vote against this. I'd like to get a feel for everybody's wishes before we move forward. So I'm going to hold the table just to make sure. So.
I'm ready to move forward.
Okay. Okay. All right.
All right. I can, I'm ready to make a, sorry, I'm ready to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of Z120, 2634 Oberlin Road. The case is consistent with the future land use map and with the 2030 Comprehensive Plan and is reasonable in the public interest as it adds housing in a close-to-mixed-use center. It adds housing along transit corridor. It's also adding a diverse mix of offerings and also has a sensitivity to the neighboring properties as well.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I had one.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to point out that the CAC vote was against the case. So they have worked really well with the neighbors, and I do commend that process. But I think it's helpful to note that the neighborhood spoke differently in terms of wanting the project.
And I respect.
All right.
And I do respect that aspect of their vote. That was just acknowledging.
Yeah, just using the microphone.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. No, and understanding that and understanding the sensitivity of the citizen vote, so not negating that at all. So thank you for bringing that to light. I'm just looking at also the bigger picture of what that means for Raleigh as well. So thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No.
No.
Okay. The case moves forward.
Right.
So it was six to two. Did you have a question?
No, I was just going to.
Point out the time.
Point out the time.
Yeah, I was about to do that, too.
And note that you have the option to try to clear out the old business or start a brand-new zoning case fresh with 15 minutes to go.
Well, yeah, I don't know what the best answer is, so why don't you give me some guidance? Because I don't think we're going to get through old business either.
Well, we have we have two.
And so, yeah, so is this your?
Short case.
This is the zoning case, and we believe is a short case. I also am wondering if we need to maybe add an hour at the beginning. I mean, we need to talk about what we're going to do with these cases that we have to keep pushing out because I feel like we have to process the zoning cases that are The applicants, you know, are working to meet these timelines, and and I don't want to I don't want to not respect the money and the effort that's going into these these privately brought-forward items to handle city items. So I would like some thought.
I know there was some discussion about or some desire to send TC16, the ADU text amendment back to the text change committee.
Yes.
So if that's the case, if that's something you could do quickly before you lose your forum.
I actually would like to send it, I've been thinking about this, to the Committee of the Whole, because I'd like for more members to be there. Text Change only has three to five members show up for that meeting, and text our Committee of the Whole, we're all there, and there are people who are not on Text Change that are at the Committee of the Whole. So if there's no objection to that, I'd like to move it into the next Committee of the Whole. We don't currently have anything on that agenda.
Well, we do have a text change next Tuesday. It would be nice to kind of discuss this, but when's the next Committee of the Whole?
The next Committee of the Whole would be the 26th of March.
When's the next text change?
Next text change is next Tuesday. So it would require the members that have had feedback, that are not part of the Text Change Committee, come in and actually participate in that conversation. So, you know, we have several that have concerns that would like to participate, and I'd like to make sure that we facilitate that participation. So do you have any guidance about that? I mean, I know we're holding it until the 26th of March, but.
Well, I think that the, I mean, making an observation, there's been a trend of the Planning Commission's committee is reporting items out without specific direction and then them being reheard at the full commission meeting. If the, I think, at some point, the committee system, particularly the Committee of the Whole, making a strong recommendation on the case so that the those can be dispatched with more quickly in the full meeting, might be one direction to look at going forward other than, but this is a specific question whether to hear the ADUs in Committee of the Whole or Text Change Committee. Is that?
Yeah, that's where we're sitting right now.
I don't know how to provide guidance. If you hear it in Text Change Committee, it's an opportunity to maybe hear it back on the agenda, but if your concern is that it hasn't been discussed by the larger body, then I think the deferral to the next full commission meeting would be the way to have that happen most quickly. The committee has already heard it and made a recommendation.
The text change has already had a.
The one issue with that is with the committee and why I was, I'm in support of putting it back. of putting it back in the committee was because a handful of us were out of town for that one meeting.
Okay.
And, and I think that there's, you know, in the committee meeting, I guess I feel like it gets a little bit more technical. We have the specific, you know, city authority there. I mean, I do think that...
Well, why don't we put it into text change committee next week? And if we need to, we can put it out into committee of the whole. How's that?
Yeah.
All right.
I also kind of feel like the text change in particular, the text change committee should be open to the entire commission.
It is.
It is.
Oh, I thought it was the committee of the whole.
No, that's what I said. Anybody who wants to have input should please show up.
Oh, do our votes count?
Your votes don't count, I don't think, but I think you can come in.
But it doesn't matter because we're pushing it, too.
Yeah, we need to hear what the issues are.
But, but you can also send emails. You don't have to show up. And so, yeah.
But, at any rate, so let's push the ADU text change to TC...
Text change committee.
Yeah, to text change committee next week. We'll see how far we get with it. We also have another text change that I would like to go ahead and send in there now, TC-120.
The text change committee.
Let's go ahead and send that to text change so at least we have some disposition of that. And let's, let's see.
Text change again is what, what time?
Four o'clock next Tuesday. So, and then TC-17 has already been heard. So, that one can hold, but I would like to get to this last zoning case before we lose quorum. So, let's please go ahead and take that up and we can...
As staff's coming up, let me correct something I said earlier about motions to reconsider. They only require a majority vote, not a supermajority. I started to second-guess myself and had to go back and look, so I apologize.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, Z-320 is our last case, 4102 and 4108 Virtuous Street. So, it's a request to rezone about 3.6 acres from industrial mixed-use, three stories, IX-3 to IX-5 CU. There's also a special highway overlay district on the property that's not proposed to change with the request. The South CAC voted last night to recommend approval, 27-0, and your deadline for action is June.
What was the number at the CAC? I'm sorry.
27.
27 to 0. Thank you.
So, the area is predominantly industrial. Nearby adjacent districts include IX-5 and IX-3 and IH, heavy industrial. Some context, this is south and east of Raleigh. You see I-40. It's to the east of I-40, exit 303. So, everything on the west, or sorry, everything on the east of 40 is City of Raleigh Limits or ETJ, and everything to the west is Garner, ETJ, and City Limits. The site is in City of Raleigh Limits. So, the area is predominantly industrial and commercial. Have the Pepsi bottling plant to the east there. And then, on the north side of Joan Sausage Road, there are uses that serve the exit, like a Speedway and some fast food restaurants. And as you can see, the closest residential in the area are on the opposite side of I-40 and then sort of out of frame north on Joan Sausage Road. Zoom in on the site. Its two properties are bounded on three directions by streets, Joan Sausage Road, Generosity Court, and Virtuous Street. Some views of the site, it's forested currently. This is looking south on Joan Sausage and intersection of Generosity and Virtuous. There's one condition proposed. It's prohibiting some uses that would normally be permitted: dorm, fraternity, sororities, passenger terminal, adult establishment, pawn shop, vehicular repair, and light manufacturing. So, there's no change in base district, so no new uses introduced. Those conditions, these prohibit some that would normally be permitted. And then, there's a change of three stories to five stories. So, entitlement across the board is increasing. Carbon analysis, this is not in a particularly walkable or transit-connected area. There would be some more efficient unit, housing types permitted on the site, multi-unit. There's no current bus service in the area. Closest is one and a quarter mile from the site and nothing planned in the future. So, for affordability, their height increase would add potential units. The variety of housing types would remain the same, and it would permit a smaller lot. But again, it's not in within walking distance of transit, and there's no guaranteed subsidized units. Future land use map is business and commercial services, so that aligns with the IX district. So, request is consistent with future land use map, and there's no urban form guidance for the site. So, overall, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the future land use map, and a majority of relevant policies, including policies on compact development near major road infrastructure and accommodating industrial uses in areas indicated on the future land use map. And there's one inconsistent policy which speaks to limiting non-industrial uses in industrial areas. So, the request is for a mixed-use district that limits with, via conditions, some non-industrial uses, but there would be a variety of others that would be permitted. And there are no outstanding issues. I can answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I'm confused. What do they want to develop? Or they just want to do the zoning change?
It's mainly a height change in the request, but the applicant...
Yeah, I guess, I was confused, too, because I thought there was, I thought this was an industrial use, but then I thought you were talking about residential units. Maybe I misunderstood.
You were, you're speaking with regard to the carbon and emission analysis and affordability analysis, consistent with all. Yeah.
Any other questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? All right, let's hear from the applicant.
Good morning again. Isabel Maddox, P.O., Box 946, Raleigh 27602. I'm here today representing First Carolina, developer and the management, developer and manager of hotel properties. This proposal to add an extra two stories is really to facilitate a hotel development. And last night at the CAC, I was not aware of what the hotel flag they were developing under was. I've since confirmed that they're talking about 110-room Spring Hill Suites. You know, it adds some needed hotel rooms in this I-40 Garner Raleigh corridor. Will support the Amazon distribution facility, which is just on the other side of 40 to the south. It's also in fairly close proximity to downtown Raleigh. You know, this area, we had a neighbors' meeting. Nobody showed up. There's no residential neighbors, so people don't show up. We did have a CAC, second CAC, last night. We had a 27 to 0 vote in favor. It's, you know, compatible with the neighborhood. There's a mix of industrial uses. There's Gregory Pull Equipment. There's a roofing supply, but there's also Burger King and Speedway and some fast foods and that kind of thing. So, I think the limited-service hotel will be appropriate for that area, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know you all have been, had a long morning, so I won't belabor anything. Thank you.
How many units? How many, how many rooms?
110.
Any other questions for the applicant? You can stop the clock. Thank you. So, the room looks pretty empty, but if there's anyone here that wants to speak in support, please come forward. I don't think I see any members of the public at all. Anyone that wants to speak in opposition. Okay, let's bring it back to the table. What's your pleasure? What are your thoughts?
Just looking at the area, it doesn't seem, you know, out of place to have a hotel along there. It's right off the freeway, so, you know, you get the little signs to go over there. I'm assuming that the developer has done their homework to see if they're going to be impacted by, you know, any of the industrial, and I would assume they wouldn't pursue it if they were, so.
Right. I'm ready to support this case. All right, is anyone ready to make a motion?
I move to recommend approval of case number Z-32020, Virtuous Street. It's consistent with the future land use map and consistent with the comp plan, and it seems to be consistent with the area, as my statements I just said. So, I vote to approve it.
Was there a public, did you give a, a reason why it's in the public interest? I'm sorry, I missed it if you...
Oh, just my previous comments that I said out of order, but it's, it's consistent with the area. It's, I thought those were just guidelines, but it implements policies contained within the comp plan specifically.
That's good enough.
Consistent with the area.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further conversation? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Done. Thank you, everybody. So, let's see, we, several of us are leaving, like, imminently at noon.
Right.
So, yes.
I was going to say, is the street name change anything of issue or concern for any of the board members?
Are there any concerns with the street name changes cases?
Is there a particular reason why? What's the particular reason as to why they want to change the street names?
Yes. Tryon Road has been realigned in this location, and segments of that road that, that are now, that are still functioning streets but are not part of the Tryon Road corridor still carry that name. So, this is to remove the Tryon Road name off of there. Staff could probably give a very brief presentation, but we're unaware of any known issues with these names. But these names are, the street names are important for addressing for emergency response, and every place has to have a unique address within the city.
I was just going to suggest if that was, if that was an easy one, you could move approval of both.
Can we, do you guys feel like you can vote without a presentation for this?
Let's do it.
All right. So, I think we're going to save you the time of making the presentation, Mr. Land.
Sounds good.
Okay. So, is there anybody here from the public that came to speak about either one of these cases? Okay. So, I'll hear a motion on SNC-0120.
I move approval.
Anyone second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'd take a motion on NC-0220.
Move approval for NC-0220.
Okay.
Second.
NC.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. So, we're moving TC-120 to text change. That leaves the draft minutes. So, I think we can probably take care of those pretty quickly, too. So, the first one is the draft from February 11th. Is that correct? Or I've lost them. So, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes from February 11th?
Motion to approve minutes February 11th.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, I'll take, wait. For the February 25th, I did have an issue with one of the lines in there. I can send it to you, Janita. That's okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve with update to one of the sentences. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
All right. So, it says, Ms. Jeffries responded, "She struggles to support a case by an applicant which has property that has degraded and is not well-maintained and finds that the mobile home industry..." Actually, now that I'm reading out loud, it sounds fine. Never mind. Yeah. So, anyway, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All right. So, you seconded. All right. So, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, one opposed? Okay, unanimous. And the next one is, we've got another one. Hang on.
Committee of the whole minutes.
Okay.
I move approval of the committee of the whole minutes.
All right. Second.
Second. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, did I miss one? Oh, and then the special meeting, the February 27th, special planning commission meeting minutes. Anyone might want to make that motion? Make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So, it is noon, and I need to depart. Do we want to, is there anybody staying to hear the report from the chair or the members?
She's told that.
Oh, sorry. I forgot. We actually probably should give you time at the next meeting to introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself.
But if you want to, I mean, to, and tell us about you, yourself.
Okay.
But if you want to introduce yourself to the public and to the rest of us, just quickly say your name and you're a new member.
Nicole Bennett. Glad to be here. I know a lot of you already.
We are glad to have you.
And we'll, we'll give you more time, hopefully, at the next meeting if we're not completely overwhelmed by agenda items, which I think we will be, because I think I saw 10 zoning cases, maybe on the 24th, in the pending items. Maybe they'll show up, maybe they won't.
Right.
All right. So, I need to depart. So, if you want to continue, well, you need enough to have quorum, so...
I've got to go as well. Do we still have quorum with the two of us?
So, three of us are going out of the eight, so that's no quorum.
That's still quorum?
That is not quorum. So, I will adjourn the meeting and we'll pick up there. Meeting adjourned.